On the bulletin board and on the main access door to town hall, also filed in the clerk's office and posted on the township's website. This meeting is being conducted on a remote electronic basis using Zoom with live streaming on Facebook and YouTube. And will be archived on the township's YouTube and Facebook pages. As such, recordings of a public meeting are public records, subject to the Open Public Records Act. There will be an opportunity for members of the public to ask questions or provide comments once the meeting is open to the public. At that time, if any member of the public wishes to ask questions or provide comments, please use the raise your hand feature. Provided on the bottom or the top of your screen and you will be invited into the meeting by the chairperson one at a time. You will need to have audio and video capability and you will be sworn in and asked to provide your name and address for the record. You may also dial star nine if accessing this meeting by telephone. If we can all stand for the pledge of allegiance and remain standing, please for a moment of silence. In honor of our first responders and our police officers and our military who keep us safe every day. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Roll call, please.
Can you please let Bob Yurov in?
I don't, I can't. Somebody must.
Loretta, is he in? Loretta.
Not yet.
Just hold on one sec. Brian?
I just had him in.
Thank you, Brian. Thank you. Mr. Ackerson? Mayor Bontempo? Mrs. Damasso?
Here.
Mr. Foster?
Here.
Mr. Castening?
Here.
Mr. King? No? Okay. Mr. Nicholas? Ms. Pluses? Ms. Pluses?
She's here. She's on mute.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Santana?
Here.
Mr. Emma?
Here.
Mr. Daley?
He was here.
Okay.
Um, I guess we lost him because.
So I'll have Mr. Emma sit for Mr. Nicholas?
Please.
Okay. Okay.
Okay. Items one and two are um. Uh, for Hackensack Meridian, and since I sit on the board of Bay Shore Hospital, I um am going to recuse myself and I need a motion to. Allow for Bill Castenings to be the interim chair to handle this portion of the meeting.
Motion.
I make, okay, okay. Okay, Ron and Joyce. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. I'm going to sign off and somebody will text me when you wrap it up and I'll come back. Thank you.
Is John Chabot here?
So the first item on the agenda is the completeness waivers. Item one, Hackensack Meridian Health Ventures Inc. Wound Center Site Plan Number 2020 dash five, seven thirty-nine North Beer Street, Block thirty-six, Lot thirty-five dot oh four. Proposal is to install an emergency generator within associated utilities, fencing and walkways.
Geordano, right here. Right here.
So uh, both uh, Jen and uh, have submitted their comments and I'll let whoever wishes to go first. Pull up their um. Their documents and we can review them.
They're, they're here, right, Bonnie? Like John, John Junko and?
I was, we're just trying to hook up to the IT department at Geordano. Brian, if you could let that person in, Geordano IT.
Will do.
I suspect that's the attorney.
Um, I have a small um, note to mention, something to mention that Greg Bontempo is not waiting to be let in.
Okay. And Greg Bontempo, if you can let him in. Do they have to take this with themselves?
And uh.
Hi Greg.
Hey guys.
Okay. Hi Greg. Um, for a while there, John Junko raised his hand. You have something you wish to say, John?
John is the attorney for the applicant, so my guess is that he's gonna present the doc, the information.
Okay. Uh, you're on mute. Uh, you're on mute, John? Hello, John?
What's the score, George? I think he's still muted.
John, we have uh, have Geordano IT department as the login, John. I don't know if that's separate from you or if you can hear us.
Can anybody else unmute him?
I'm trying.
I've asked him to unmute.
Long meeting if people cannot mute their phones, guys.
There you go, she's coming in.
Yes. Okay.
Alrighty.
Guys, John?
Good evening. I could hear you the whole time, you just uh, you couldn't see me or hear me. Good evening, George.
Good evening.
This uh, the first portion of this is a request for waivers. This is a limited application to an existing facility. And it's to add a uh, a generator. Uh, this was an, this is an existing medical office use. It's on Block thirty-six, Lot thirty-five oh four. It, the lot property has two point three acres. It's in the medical zone. And it received preliminary and final site plan approval in December of twenty oh three. And uh, this generator is being installed to support the medical uses. We contend that that will advance the township's medical zone purposes. And um, we have located it in the uh, quite frankly, the only really available area. Uh, we've also received the review letters and have made a couple of modifications to modify the fence as requested into add additional landscaping. And uh, I know you want to go through the completeness items first and then I have uh, Mike Severese, our architect and Mark Lieber, the uh, our engineer are available for testimony.
Um, Marty, you want to swear them in?
Uh, we don't need it for completeness, Phil, so we'll let them finish their completeness and then we'll swear everybody in for the application.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
So, uh, Mr. Chair, Bob Yurov, do you want me to go through as we normally do with the completeness portion?
Yes, please.
Alright, so I, I issued a letter today dated March second. There were numerous items as outlined in the letter that have been deemed not applicable for this application. Uh, along the lines of um, some plan data. Uh, the only waivers that they are technically requesting are regarding survey information and updated survey. All information. To review this generator has been provided on the, the site plans uh, that have been presented this evening. And i- in my opinion, the items that have been checked as non-applicable. Um, are not, are not necessary for this review and the waiver request for the, the survey items. I, I believe the waiver can be granted and therefore it would be my recommendation that the board deem this application complete at this time.
Thank you, Bob. Um, why don't we um, get a motion and a, and a second to ex, uh, on the waiver and then we can have some discussion before voting?
So, motion to deem this application complete.
Oh.
Brian? And a second?
Second.
I'm sorry, whose second is?
Second.
For cost, okay. Okay, Mr. Ackerson?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor Bontempo?
Yes.
Mr. Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Castening?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. King is not here. Um. Ms. Pluses?
Yes.
Mr. Santana?
Yes.
Mr. Emma?
Yes.
Um, would you like to speak, Mr. Daley for um, Mr. King? Uh, Mr. Castening, would you like to speak?
That's fine, that's fine.
Okay, Mr. Daley?
Yes.
Yes, okay, okay.
Yes.
Thank you. The application is complete. We can now move to the public hearing.
Okay, um, for, I kind of described the application. It's gen, it's basically to provide a generator to assist this building. I have uh, Mike Severese, our project architect, who actually did the design and uh, I would like to call him as a witness, offer him as an expert. And have him be sworn. And he is here with me this evening, so Mike, would you come up to the uh, lectern, please?
And, and while we're doing that, uh, Mr. Junko will also do our professionals, so if everyone will raise their right hand.
Mark Lieber, Mark Lieber, our engineer, he's remote. Um, I see him on the screen. I didn't ask you to be sworn also.
Yep, Mark also. Hi, Mark. Uh, do you sort of tell the whole truth, know the truth to help you out?
Yes, I do.
I do.
For the record, our professionals and the applicant's professionals have been sworn in.
Thank you. Um. Mike?
If I can just interject for one second, the escrow count um, is up to date and the notices are okay.
Okay, and uh, obviously the chairwoman had a uh, appearance of conflict. Does anyone else have any uh, know of any conflict with the applicant or vice versa? See none? Okay, Mr. Junko, I'm sorry.
Thank you. I'm gonna offer Mr. Severese as an expert in the field of architecture. Mike, are you a licensed architecture and architect in New Jersey?
Yes, I am.
Uh, could you tell the board your education and experience and how long you've been designing buildings and site plans like this?
Very long when I was uh, licensed in New Jersey in nineteen eighty-seven. I went to City College, graduated in eighty-three. I'm licensed in New Jersey, New York, Pennsylvania, Florida, Connecticut, Delaware, Maryland, Virginia. I've done work over down this coast, have been in front of this board before. I've done work north as um. Probably say. Woodbridge and as south as Cape Bay.
And Mike, you uh, have done this project but many others for uh, HMH across the system, is that correct?
Yes, we do all of, uh, it's made campus work, anything, outside campus in the hospital, where there's doctors' offices or rehab centers or. Urgent care centers, we do most of those outside centers.
Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna offer Mr. Severese as a licensed architect and experienced and capable in the field of medical design.
We accept, thank you.
Okay, so Mike, you or others under your direction prepared the plans and exhibits to be submitted to the board, is that correct?
That's correct.
And for that purpose, can you confirm that the site is Block thirty-six, Lot thirty-five point oh four?
Yes.
And it has currently a two-story medical building that was approved in two thousand and three?
That's correct.
And that the medical offices are principal permitted use in the M-two zone?
Yes.
Or the M-zone, excuse me.
Yep.
Okay, and did the uh, hospital, the operator of this medical office ask you to provide a generator in the event of electrical failure?
Yes, they did. Actually, we designed their space probably about five years ago and they've been trying to get a generator on the site ever since. They upgraded the second floor.
Okay, now for that, uh, could you just, this, first of all, uh, Keith, can you put up uh? The uh, well, did you do an overall site plan?
I have one of ours where I could use marks.
Can, can you put up the two, the photograph? And then there's, yeah. I'm gonna uh, offer one exhibit which would be a photograph of the building. Mr. Lieber has uh, the exhibits under his control and when we put him up, I'll show the site plan.
All right, I just need permission to share a screen.
Well, we need permission here first to get the photographs up, so. Your idea, Loretta. Uh, approve it to the IT department, Loretta, please.
Looks like they're trying to get him.
There you go, Keith, okay. All right, Mike, uh, did you or others under your direction take this photograph?
Yes.
Can you just describe, is this the building that we want to have the generator?
Yes, it is.
And you're taking this from across the parking lot to the south of the building?
Yes, we are.
Okay, uh, Keith, could you go then, okay, could you describe, uh, I'm sorry, Marty? Could I have these photographs marked as A-one?
Yeah, we'll do the whole set. How many are there altogether?
There'll be three. This, I'd ask to be A-two and of course, the next one will be A-three. I, Mike, I'm sorry.
I was gonna say, we can mark the whole set if you want as A-one or individual, it's up to you.
I think that'll be fine.
Okay.
So, this is actually the patch of grass on the ground where we want to locate this generator. This is the side of the building. You actually, as you come into the site, you see the cobblestones uh, curbing. You come into the site from Beer Street, a wall, they curb. And sort of angle out to the main entrance of the building, which is sort of uh, to the left of, to the right of the photograph. Uh, when we go back to the other part, we'll show it, but what's important about this site is that, can you go back, Keith? Believe me? Okay, so if you look, if you see what the two lights are and the sloped roof, that's actually the main entrance of the building. Where we are is, if you go to the left of the four windows high, you'll see a white column. That's actually where we're putting the generator, correct, right there. That's where, that's where putting the generator.
Go back to two, Keith.
Why this is so important place to us is right behind that discolored brick wall, that is the electric room. That is where the incoming services to this building.
Can you move the cursor over to the brick wall?
This path that leads up there against these hedges, is actually a path that is to a service entry to the back of the building. And also a set of stairs which is behind the hedges and to the backside of the brick that's tan.
So this might, this side of the building doesn't get patients?
Doesn't get patients.
Or business, it's actually just for supporting the building.
That is correct. One thing you also notice is that the chain link fence behind this little triangle of space, that's a drop, that's a drop off. Into wetlands, so there's no place behind this building to put the generator either. It's the only flat piece of ground to put the generator. That's close enough to get the distance we need to get nine hundred amps into this building.
Okay, uh, Keith, uh, could we have the next photo, please?
Okay, that's as what, drive, driving up the drive and that's basically where that patch of grass is discolored is where, right, right there.
We should have one that has.
Is where the generator is gonna go. There we go.
Okay, Mike, is this the proposed location and did you prepare this exhibit to demonstrate how the uh, uh, generator will look at the time of installation?
Yes, we did. So, generator is in a, is a soundproof enclosure. It's at a sixty-nine decibel rating. Which is somewhere between your washing machine and a blow dryer and sound. It is a very acceptable sound for noise when the generator goes off. If hopefully never goes off, but when it does go off, at least it will protect the drugs that are behind those walls to protect it. The client's building is all about.
First of all, did you propose a fence to surround this?
Yes, we did.
And what was your original proposal?
Uh, we have a chain link fence that we, eight feet. Um, and it needs to be, we need to be there for security because you don't want anybody touching the generator. We're dealing with a transfer switch. The transfer switch is behind the fence and the meter is in front of the fence. Uh, we, we thought we, at the, we gave two submissions for arborvitae that will grow in and block the generator fully. But we actually added more to the side, which is another elevation coming uh, to the side of the generator.
Now, Mike, you saw the review letter recommended a vinyl fence as opposed to chain link. In fact, a six-foot vinyl fence. Well, are you satisfied with that?
Uh, we, we wouldn't, we'd be acceptable to a vinyl fence, but since this is in a fully enclosed enclosure, we'd rather have the fence. Be where if there was a problem when the generator was running, you can actually see it without having to be behind the fence. I thought, I think, I, I think it's overkill. I have a solid vinyl fence. We could do chain link with a vinyl coating. But I think it's better for just the, the functionality of the generator, have someone who is a maintenance man on site be able to make sure it's going all right. The gas is working and there's no uh, problems with the generator.
Yeah, but if, if the board would like, prefers a vinyl fence, we can do that.
Yes, we can.
Okay, now, in addition, your original plan proposed, I think, uh, four or three arborvitae on the uh, what would be the right side of the generator and you.
We increased it by a number of three, I think.
Another six total. So we're proposing now that that would be uh, more heavily planted. And I think that was one of the comments. Now.
Mr. Junko, just for the record, so it's how many trees did we, how many plants did we add?
Probably ten. We, it might be better to just call up a little space and we'll space a minimum five feet on the center, which would be, you're gonna have to rotate.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Severese, Bob Yurov. Um, looking at the site plan that was prepared by Mr. Lieber, there looks like he's proposing um. Around eleven. Eleven trees around that enclosure?
Yes.
Nor, eleven Norway spruce. So Norway spruce is a little different than arborvitae.
Okay, well, I mean, we're, we're okay with that also. I, I think that it's, w- we did the rendering, it was. It was asked to add a couple more to the opposite side, we did. I, I, I think they'll be fine.
Well, the Norway spruce.
I, I think the concern regarding the fence and adding the additional planting is that this is right off the road. Like this is in the front, really. As you're coming in on the driveway, it's right there. So I understand because of the, you know, utilities in the building itself, why it has to be sited there. Given my druthers, it'd be on the opposite side out of view. So while I understand some of the concerns. My concern is that this is not something that I would advocate being right there when you first drive in. Which is why the solid fence and the increased landscaping to shield it. So, you know, that would be my recommendation and that. The person who's exercising the generator or when it's running may just have to, you know. Go into the enclosure to check it, but I think that overall for the betterment of the community, not having this visible.
That's important.
Would, would be a better alternative. You know, obviously if this is how, where it has to go on the site, then it absolutely needs to be screened.
Well, it is, Miss Bean, you're correct. This is where it has to go. I think that uh, recommendation was in the letters I reviewed with our clients. We are agreeable to that.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Severese was given his preference. Mike, are you okay with the, with the, what uh, Miss Bean just described?
Yes.
Would you have, and you put a gate?
We'd have a gate, it would be solid.
Yeah.
Uh, again, this is that ugly generator, it's a very, very good enclosure and it actually matches the building, but I'm okay with the fence. I'd like the fence probably to be beige to match the generator in the building, not white.
That's fine. I don't have a problem with the color. I would prefer the solid vinyl, even if it's beige, over chain link with the slats, because the slats don't hold up.
So we'll do that and then what we were trying to do was to get a good screen of either plants. What's uh, what would be uh, the recommendation?
I'm okay with the, I, I'm okay with either. I really don't have a preference between either one.
And, and we just think there should be a couple more to make it more, a more effective screen right now.
That, that works for me also.
Okay, now, Mike, with regard to this uh, generator, you mentioned the sound attenuation. It has a self-contained cabinet for sound attenuation, is that correct?
That's correct, yep.
Okay, and it's gonna operate on natural gas?
Natural gas, correct.
Right, and there, um, now, there was a comment also in one of the review letters to add a couple of bollards.
We, we will do that. That's, that's not an issue to us. We can put a couple that are right at the edge of the sidewalk, right before, right before the grass. We could probably put three or four along the sidewalk at that point.
And second, and finally, this uh, generator would have to be exercised.
Yes, correct.
But we can set this, set the exercise uh, timeframe.
Yes, we will. It's normally set during the week in the afternoons for an hour. And it's on either bi-weekly or monthly.
But if the board had a different preference, we can accommodate that?
That's fine.
So our proposal for the exercises, weekdays, afternoon, uh, within an hour.
And Mr. Junko, Bob Yurov, every two weeks? Is it every week? Just so that everybody, the town knows that if it's supposed to be every two weeks and all of a sudden they're getting calls that they're doing it every other day. Just so that we have something on record.
Manufacturing recommendations are every week. Uh, well, I've seen it done as much as at two weeks. It's usually done for a half hour period. Um, just enough to get it to run.
So we would say one day, once a week for uh, the one half hour during the weekday in the afternoon.
Okay.
This is a nine hundred amp generator, it's two sixty KVA. It's a Kohler four U eight ten. And like I said, it's at a sixty-nine point nine decibel rating with that closure, which is extremely low in the sound and noise as a consideration.
Now, um, is there, are there any other details or factors about this? I mean, it's kind of basic.
Kind of basic. I mean, we could only be so far away from the electric room to be useful and sufficient.
Okay, now, Mike, as a licensed uh, architect in the state of New Jersey, I'm gonna ask you about the variance. With regard to the variance of this being located in the front yard, did you exhaust every opportunity to find a conforming location on this site?
Yes, we did.
And were you then compelled because of the wetlands and the slope to the rear, which is visible from this photograph? And uh, the proximity to the electrical panel to recommend that this be the most convenient and best performing site?
Yes.
And as a result of that, you're adding, taking additional measures to make it as attractive as possible?
Correct.
Okay, now, in your opinion, if uh, does this uh, alternative propose benefits to the medical building that outweigh any detriments?
Yes.
For an example, this provides for the backup of electrical service for medical services in the event power should go out during patient time. Is that one?
That's correct, but one of the main reasons is for their, I, as we're doing today, vaccines, it's to keep drugs at the right temperatures.
Okay, and then uh, with regard to the, that, uh, for the positive, would you then say? That the benefits of having this generator would outweigh any detriment, let alone a substantial detriment, for having it in the front yard?
Yes.
And is that based on the description that you already gave of the site and the proximity to the electrical panel?
Correct.
Okay, and then uh, finally, if the board was to grant this approval, is there any uh, upset? That this would create to the zoning scheme or plan or the health or welfare of the community, given that this is a medical zone?
No, that I could see it all, in fact, it will enhance. Correct.
So.
In fact, it will enhance it because it's enhancing the value of this building, for a medical building.
And that's the value to the patients and the ability to deliver high, high-quality medical service?
Yes.
Okay, so, Mr. Chairman, I have no other questions of Mr. Severese.
Thank you. Um, I guess now we'll open it up to any questions that the, the board may have. Are there any questions? Okay, I guess, guess we have none, okay.
Mr. Chairman, Bob Yurov, just really quick to get any, something on the record and Mr. Junko, I'm not sure if it's for Mr. Lieber or Mr. Severese. Uh, just uh, item three A of my letter. Um, just something on the record, are there gonna be any impacts to the existing grading or stormwater management of the um, property?
Well, Mr. Severese can answer it, but I'll ask, I'll also ask Mr. Lie, Lieber to confirm. Uh, Mike, are there any grading requirements for this?
Not at all. If you can see from the, the previous existing photo, it's a flat piece of grass. We're putting a housekeeping bed, a housekeeping pad under the generator. And so there should be no water issue at all from there.
Okay, thank you.
So, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, I was just gonna say, if there are no other questions, I'll call Mr. Lieber. We have a couple of questions for him and then I think uh. Unless the board has some issues with it, I'd like to uh, you know, be able to wrap this up.
That's fine, go ahead.
All right, so I would call Mark Lieber. Thank you, Mike. Mark, you were sworn and uh, I would ask, first of all, did you have an opportunity to review the uh, March second letter from uh, Bob Yurov?
Yes, I have.
Are there any comments or conditions in that letter that you would have, any question or wish to discuss?
No, I can concur with Mr. Severese uh, with his prior statements.
Well, specifically addressed Bob Yurov's question about stormwater. Is there any impact from this uh, develop, this addition to the site that would require some type of stormwater management?
No, the addition of that pad is completely negligible. Uh, whatever rain had fallen from the sky onto that generator would probably run off just down that slope into the wetlands. It's. Negligible.
Okay, and you, you've, you've seen the revisions proposed? Okay. And you, you've, you've seen the revisions proposed or requested for the, uh, fence to be vinyl and the, uh, additional plantings. Can you modify your plan to accommodate those issues?
Yes, we will.
Okay. Mark, are there any questions that you want to raise with Mr. Euro or any other comments that you want to make on the plan?
No, I have no comments.
Then I would just ask you as a civil engineer and in your capacity as a licensed professional engineer, if you had an opportunity to review the elements related to the variance associated with this being in the front yard.
That's correct. The, um, fence itself is in the front yard, but not the generator.
Okay. But in any event, with regard to that variance, do you see any benefits that can be derived to the medical building or any detriments that may substantially impair that, uh, use?
Well, certainly the benefit is this is a necessary use for that building, which does promote the general welfare and the public health. Um, you know, due to what goes on in the building, it's important to have. Uh, any perceived detriments I think are, uh, addressed through the, you know, addition of the fence and the landscaping and frankly, uh, this is the only location on the property where this could fit. Um, any other locations we looked at were either adjacent to residences or too far from the electrical room.
And with regard to the negative criteria, if the board were to grant this variance, do you think it would upset the zoning plan or scheme in the M-zone?
No, not in any way. And frankly, this is a very common addition to this type of a building, not just in the town, but everywhere.
And likewise, would it upset or, uh, or adversely impact the health or welfare of the community?
No, it, it, it's purely a benefit. And again, as a medical use, I think having this as part of the building is, uh, very important and that there's no detriments.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I have no other questions for, uh, Mr. Lieber.
Um, thank you, Mr. Junko. Uh, I'll ask the board if they have any questions for Mr. Lieber at this point. Hearing none, um, I guess that testimony is deemed complete. So, uh, we can now move on to a, um, a motion.
Well, Mr. Chairman, may I interrupt? I think you have to open it to the public.
Yeah, you're right. Thank you. Yes.
Thank you.
Are there any comments from the public?
Let's do questions first, Bill.
Any questions or comments from the raised hand?
Yeah. Questions first and then comments.
Use the raised hand if you have one. So we don't have any.
Apparently we have no, um, no questions and no comments.
Okay. I'd just like to mention that Mr. King was here the whole time, so he is eligible. However, we can seat Mr. Daley for Mr. Musso.
Very good.
Okay.
Very good. Yes, I guess the first order of business is to approve the variance. Is that correct?
Well, to approve the application as proposed.
So, Bill, before you do that, so let's close the public, say no questions or, uh, comments.
Okay, the public session is closed. Thank you all for helping me through this process.
Now, any motion or any discussion is next.
Motion.
Brian?
Your second?
Second.
Is that Ron? Ron? Okay, this is to approve. Okay, Mr. Ackerson?
Yes.
Mayor Bon Tempo?
Yes.
Mr. Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Castening?
Yes.
Mr. King? Mr. King? Mr. King?
He's muted, but he's saying yes.
Should I put a yes? Ron?
Okay, there we go.
Okay, Mr. King?
Yes.
And he's saying yes.
Ms. Plusas?
Yes.
Mr. Castening Santana? Mr. King, Mr. King? Mr. Emma? Mr. Daley?
Yes.
Yes.
But he's saying yes.
Could people put their microphones on mute? People put their microphones on mute, please?
Yes.
Did people put their microphones on mute? People put their microphones on mute, please? Did people put their microphones on mute?
Yes.
Yes.
I think Mr. Thomas needs to be put on mute.
Bonnie, can you mute Tom? There he goes. All right.
There we go. That was the problem.
Okay.
Okay.
That item's finished. So somebody has to text Serena.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thanks. Good night.
Good night.
Any job, Bill.
Well, thanks, Brian.
Uh, I'm, I'm going to stay because the next, uh, issue is the administrative approval for the walkway.
Yeah, let me read that into the record. The administrative change approval, item three, Bay Shore Hospital, proposed concrete walk. Safety issue at the southeast corner of the hospital property, making it necessary to install a concrete walkway so maintenance personnel could safely access the chiller. Walkway is approximately four feet wide by a hundred feet long and is located between the adjacent medical office building and the hospital fuel tanks. So, Mr. Junko.
Well, Mr. Chairman, what has happened is, uh, during this recent, uh, snow events, our clients and their, uh, maintenance staff and engineers all figured out that this was a problem of how to get, uh, service folks towards the, uh, chiller and, uh, climate control areas for the hospital building. So, uh, they requested that this, uh, walkway be added to the site for that of being able to service it. And, um, it was, uh, deemed to be in, uh, of such a de minimis nature for the campus in the site that it would be a administrative approval. I think that all of the, uh, elements of trying to have the hospital operate efficiently is addressed by virtue of, uh, or is continued to be addressed, uh, by an addition of a sidewalk that for all intents and purposes is a typical sidewalk, four foot concrete, four foot wide concrete. And it gets, uh, the maintenance personnel from point A to the chiller and, uh, climate controlled areas.
Thank you.
That's about all I, uh, can say.
All right, any questions, any questions of Mr. Junko? Any comments? Okay, hearing none. Uh, uh, go ahead, Bonnie.
To adopt this as an administrative change?
Yes.
Who was that, Bill?
Yes.
And a second?
I second.
Joyce?
Yes.
Mr. Ackerson?
Yes.
Mayor Bon Tempo?
Yes.
Mr. Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Castening?
Yes.
Mr. King? Mr. King?
Unmute yourself, Mr. King.
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Um, Ms. Plusas?
Yes.
Mr. Santana?
Yes.
Mr. Emma?
Yes.
Mr. Daley?
Yes.
All right, well, Mr. Chairman and Board members, thank you very much for hearing our cases this evening and, uh, appreciate your time and have a good night.
You as well. Thank you.
Okay.
Somebody texted, uh, Serena to rejoin?
Yeah, I just texted her. I'm sure she'll be right here.
Okey dokey. Uh, okay, just got to find a plant. Okay, folks, we're up to item three? No, item four? Okay, thank you. Continued public hearing, item four, Barclay Square, Homedale.
If I could just interject that the escrow account is up to date. The escrow account was replenished. Do we have Mr. Zimmerman on here? Cause he was having trouble. I just want to make sure Mr. Zimmerman is on. Neil.
Okay. In the meanwhile, may I read the?
Oh, there he is. Okay.
Can I read the statement, please?
Yeah.
Continued public hearing, item number four. This item was carried from our last planning board meeting. Barclay Square at Homedale, preliminary and final major site plan 2020-1. Proposed construction of a 60-unit multifamily apartment building and associated site improvements located on Palmer Avenue and designated as block 52, lots 17 and 18 on the municipal tax map. Property consists of 6.74 acres of undeveloped land in the AH-MF affordable housing multifamily zone. Forty-eight of the proposed residential apartment units will be market rate units and 12 of the units will be affordable units. The 60 apartment units will be contained in one building and 116 parking spaces are proposed. Um, we, escrows are up to date and our members that were not present last time have in fact signed paperwork to attest to the fact that they watched the video, correct, Bonnie?
Correct, Brian and, uh, Mayor Bon Tempo. Yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, okay, is, uh, Mr. Zimmerman, you're on. You're on mute though, so there you go.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
I can't hear you.
Okay. Can you hear any of us? Mrs. Zimmerman?
I can hear you, Serena.
Okay, I, I, I would assume. I mean, I'm loud, but I don't think he could hear me in my house. It's a hell from here. Um.
Zimmerman, can you hear? Mr. Zimmerman?
It looks like he can't hear us.
He's not muted. Uh, maybe you could, uh, exit and rejoin?
Do, do we have a way to contact him other than through this Zoom?
Yeah, Bonnie, Bonnie does.
It might be his speaker in his computer. Looks like he. Okay, so Bonnie texted him because we could hear, we, why can we hear him?
Can't hear us, evidently.
Oh, that's right.
It could be a volume on his, on his computer.
What I'm thinking, yep.
I was hoping, let's see what they have to say. I just turned up the volume, um.
Hey, we can hear you now. We can hear him, but he can't hear us. Can you hear us? No.
Mrs. Zimmerman, can you hear us?
All right, Bonnie, just ask him to, um, log off and come on again. Are you still talking to him on the phone?
I'm trying to let patients get through.
Now, listen, I, I have him on the cell phone. It's on his website. I'm going to call him back.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Marty's trying to give. Okay.
Hi. Okay, okay.
Okay, he's going to try to log off and on.
Okay. Are the objectors, um, attorneys also on the line?
It's, uh, Stephen Melneck is on, um.
Okay, I don't see him. That's.
We have like 64 people, something. A lot of people on.
Okay, I, but it, I just need the people that are be presenting. So the attorney is imperative. Are the, are the professionals, presumably professionals also available?
Melneck, M-L.
And then Mrs. Zimmerman's other professionals because Mr. Minelik is going to.
Oh, wait. Mr. Sutner, he is a professional. Right here. Yeah. Where's, um, Melneck? He was here.
There you.
Where? Okay, yeah.
Hi, Lou.
I must say it. I can't. Wait for Neil to come. He's going to come on and check there. But that'll come late. Do they come in at the bottom? We're just waiting for Neil to come back on.
Okay.
Marty?
Yes.
You want to give him another call? I didn't bring his cell phone with me. I apologize.
But while we're waiting, um, uh, Mr. Minelik, uh, I want to offer you the planning board's deepest condolences on the loss you just recently suffered. I am, um, heartbroken and devastated for you and wish you, clearly wish you the, you know, the best. And if any of us can be of any help, please let us know. Um, that was, I'm really so sorry and I hope that you're doing okay. And, uh, carry the love of that beautiful woman with you, you know, in your heart and in your soul.
Thank you, Chairwoman, and, and thank you and the, and the board for, uh, uh, and I would, I would repeat this when, uh, Mr. Zimmerman gets on his, his willingness to, uh, accommodate, uh, my illness and my family's illness last time. So, uh,
Oh, absolutely. I'm so sorry that it happened, that what happened, but again, you know, you have our condolences.
Thank you. Yeah, no, it's, it's a real testament to the seriousness of what's going on.
Mm-hmm.
Family, seven of us all tested positive. Three of us hospitalized for over a week and one of us passed, of course, and, uh, so everybody stay safe.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can hear you, yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes. Can you hear us, Mrs. Zimmerman?
Yeah, no, I can't hear anything. Yeah. Uh, and, um, I'm, I'm hearing you on the phone, obviously. So why doesn't he also call in? My volume is turned up. What's wrong?
Uh, Madam Chair, there are other members, two of our team, that perhaps we could let in.
Let me, let me try that.
Ken Pizzo.
Okay, can you let those in?
Andrew Shropshire is our traffic consultant.
Bonnie, you have those? Please let them in.
Ken Pizzo, what was the?
I'm gonna hang up and try that.
Okay.
He's trying to call in with his cellphone for the voice, so we'll see if he gets.
Who was the other one? Mr. Pizzo and who else?
Victor Barr and Andrew Feranda. I see you just let in.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you.
Madam Chairwoman, we have one professional, but I'll defer to you if you'd like me to wait to let them in.
No, you can let them in now. That way they're all, while we're waiting for Mrs. Zimmerman.
Brian Murphy.
You got it Bonnie? Brian Murphy?
Brian Murphy, we're looking.
Okay, he's raised his hand. Thank you, Brian.
He must be an engineer. He's smart.
Like unlike a tur-. Take that as a personal adult, no?
I've been telling my kids since they can listen, no, no law school.
I couldn't get any of mine to go, so. All right, where is?
Hello, can you hear me?
We can hear you, Mrs. Zimmerman.
Okay, I just, my apologies. I just signed in with my telephone, so I have the screen up and I have the audio through the phone. I don't know why, but my apologies.
Okay, as long as you can hear us and we can hear you, we can move, we can go forward.
Yes.
Okay, all righty, you're on.
Okay. Getting an echo?
Yeah, you're okay.
No, no echo.
Okay. Thank you very much. We, I have two witnesses tonight. I would like to call our engineer and our architect. We submitted some revised plans and I would like them to take you through the changes that they made. So I'd like to call Louis Zugner, please.
Just for the record, all your witnesses and the board's professionals are still under oath?
Louis, you submitted some revised plans since the last hearing?
I did. Is it possible for me to just screen share for a moment?
That would be good if we could, Madam Chairwoman.
Great. Can everyone see the screen I now have up?
Bonnie, what exhibit number are we up to?
They're listed on, on the website. I don't have the listing in front of me, but whatever's on the list on the website.
Well, he needs that for his resolution, so we should have it for him. Lou, do you know what this is called?
I'm looking at the website, trying to get it up right now. One moment. So this is it's actually showing, I think it's probably numbered incorrectly. It's showing it as A2. And this is actually a revision, a resubmission of A2.
Okay.
I think the next number would be A8.
Okay, A8. Thank you.
Sure. Okay, this is labeled site rendering. It's dated February 12th, 2021. And this is a slight update to what was previously submitted as a rendering. This is obviously the colored version enclosed of our site.
I'm sorry, just want to be sure. This is A10 we're talking about?
He labeled it A8. Do we have an A8 and A9? Then this would be A10.
Well, A10 is what was listed on the website for the 212 site ecological constraints. I'm just trying to go off of what was posted.
This is a rendering of a change they made, so it would either need, it would need a new number. He thought they were up to A8. What number are we up to? Please.
Well, this is, the first exhibit is listed as A10, so I apologize, but that's what was sent to us.
But Bonnie has it in a different location on the website and I see it now, so she did have them listed. I apologize. And this is listed as exhibit A9, site rendering.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Madam Chairwoman, if I could just interrupt, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, I'm off the phone. My computer audio is now working magically for some reason.
Oh, there you go. Great. You could, we could hear you always. It was you that couldn't hear us, so I'm glad that we got that straightened out. Great, thank you. Go ahead.
Okay, so I don't think this will take too long. Coming out of the last meeting, we certainly heard concerns, some particular concerns through the hearing, and we did update plans and resubmitted those. Those plans were dated February 18th of 2021. And among those changes, there are a couple of specific things we did in that update. One was we went back to our stormwater basin, which is in the upper right-hand corner on this plan in a darker green. And we, we went through those calculations again to essentially take the water surface or the top of the water when the pond was totally full, the 100-year storm, which is obviously infrequent by its own definition, but it's still critical, the 100-year storm. And we made to lower that surface elevation. We did that so that we could provide some added security to neighbors and properties around us to ensure we wouldn't be anywhere near allowing water to get out of that basin or onto neighboring properties. Secondly, for that basin, in terms of trying to make sure we maintain it and keep it operating for years to come, we added to the plans a system where we could get out the back of the garage. Remember, the building has a first-floor garage level that we could go out the back of the garage and have a level area path to provide access to readily get in and out of the basin with equipment. So for regular mowing or to bring in small equipment to do maintenance if it was necessary, we provided that in the new set of plans. Then also in the submission, we looked at the.
I'm sorry, Mr., I'm sorry. Can you just, with the, with the mouse, show us where you edit those things so that everybody can follow along more easily? And the people that are, because not everybody was on the Zoom last time, so some people might not know where, what you're talking about.
Absolutely. So again, the basin's this darker green back here. And then in the plan, we created a system to get out through the gates, through the garage, would take maintenance to set that up. And then there was a graded level path along the back of the building so that that slope would allow for vehicles and equipment to move through this back area, get to the basin, do whatever other maintenance in the rain garden is necessary behind the building.
Thank you.
Sure. Part of our submission included an operations and maintenance manuals. It's part of the process to show how we would maintain all these structures and we added into that in the resubmission specific wording and directions on how to deal with the rain garden. So it previously talked about the stormwater basin itself, but you know, we had named the three rain gardens. Again, they're to the south of us, behind the building and up front. And we put specific maintenance programs into that manual for those as well. Additionally, in that revision, in what I would call the buffer, this planted landscape area to our north, we went into that area and made some changes into what I would call a combination drain. So there's not a lot of water that gets to that area, but that area, we wanted to make sure both overland flow to the back, to the basin, in addition to pipes underground and small yard inlets, we would ensure that any water that collected in that area and that landscaping got into the basin and went in that direction and not towards our neighbor to the north. There were a couple of things we added based on specific requests. You can see here at the exit of the building, there's a painted striped crosswalk and also one along Palmer Avenue. Those were added into the plan. And then right near our entrance, we added an additional ADA space. This does not change our total number. We talked about this the last time. We still have 116 spaces, but this one space is now ADA and that was a request in a review letter, creating a total of six ADA spaces. That outlines the proposed changes I have. Mr. Zimmerman, was there anything else you wanted me to talk to?
Yes, there was one report that we've received since the last hearing, the Environmental Commission report, which recommended a conservation easement. Could you address that, please?
Yes, that was a November 20th report. And it asked two different elements. So if you recall, we're combining two lots, 17 and 18, and to the north is a narrow lot 18. 17 actually has the conservation easement already in place. On lot 18, the conservation easement is not, there's nothing fixed there in place. So if we were to come to the back of our property behind the development, this limit of development that's shown in here, we could create the conservation easement at that line, also file that. That's something that we could certainly address and do as part of this. Secondarily, it asks about monumenting the conservation easement. That's a requirement in your ordinance and is shown in the plans that we would monument and fence that easement line throughout.
So that's all I have of Mr. Zugner. Would, what is the board's pleasure? Would you like me to put on Mr. Barr to give his brief testimony as to the changes that he's made to his plans? Or shall we turn it over to Mr. Melneck for cross-examination, Mr. Zugner, which didn't occur at the last hearing?
Mr. Melneck, what would you prefer?
It may make sense to let the applicant re- ask questions of the architect at this point so we can keep that flow going.
Sure. Sure.
Madam Chairwoman, when do we get to ask questions? Towards the end?
If you have a question, you may ask it now.
Okay, Mr. Zugner, how are you? This is Prakash Santana. I have a few questions for you. This, let's start with the stormwater development, low-impact development checklist that you resubmitted. That checklist, if you remember previously, the part two of that checklist said that you had done a site review on 6/2015 with Holmdel Affordable Housing LLC. And I asked if Holmdel Affordable Housing LLC was the same entity as Barclay Square LLC? And you said no. The application now has the following, that it, that you did a site review with Barclay Square LLC in June of 2015. So did you do a site review in June, June of 2015 with both entities?
So I think it's poor language on our part in the report. We had done this effort back in 2015 as part of some entirely different effort and different applicant. When we put this together now, we have reused internally, obviously, design information that we had done in the past. But this is for a new applicant, new entity, and it's a new, a complete new checklist that's being done and should not say 2015.
So, so is it fair to say that it's incorrect what you presented, that you did not do a site review in June of 2015 with Barclay Square LLC?
In 2015, it was part of a different application with a different applicant when we did it then.
Yeah, that's why I'm asking. Did you, did you or did you not do a site review with Barclay Square back in 2015?
It was not with Barclay Square in 2015.
Okay, so that's a, that's a mistake, error, or a false submission?
Correct. It should be dated. It should be a current date that we prepared that.
Okay. All right. Question number two regarding the grading of the slope of the retention basin. If you remember, the grading of the slope is three to one. And I asked the question about our, our development regulations prohibiting any grade greater than 25%. So sec-, I went back to our development regulations and it specifically states, section 30 dot 116 dot 4 dot F specifically states that grading above 25% is prohibited. So why would you not want to get a variance for this?
So the grading here and this design looked specifically to the AHMF zoning. And that had language on how you would grade this particular basin and gave reasons that permitted this to be at three to one. So this is compliant with the AHMF zone, which supersedes that section you're referencing in your ordinance.
My next two questions, could you provide us the date when you did the soil test for the two pits? I know you did a groundwater study with two pits. Do you have the exact date for the two tests?
I believe testing was done at two separate times in two different areas. And I will have to, I can do a little bit of research here when I get a moment. I don't know those dates off the top of my head, no.
You know when, which year roughly?
I, I don't. I know that they're not in the last year. I know that they were done at, you know, I think one was a couple of years ago and I forget when the other one was. But I would have to pull the exact dates. I'm sorry, I don't know those exact dates.
But in your stormwater management data, it actually says, let me see. 3/27/09. Is that right?
I know that there were some that were done about when we did the last application. I know that there were some that were done when the office application was put together, so it's possible. I don't know the exact dates and I could pull them, but I do know the soil conditions would not have changed. So being like other, other elements, you might need to be current. Soil conditions would not change, so the date being '09 or 2015 or 2018 should not matter.
Yeah, so that's where, that's my question. So I have pit number 103 and 104 that basically measures the groundwater depth done on 3/27, what did I say, 3/27/09. So that's 11 years ago. That's what you use to say that the groundwater has adequate separation between the bottom of the basin and what's required. Now, are you saying that in the last 11 years, there would have been absolutely no change to the water table?
The water table, seasonal high water table, you can use a date that's current or past that should not change. It shouldn't matter. It's something NJDEP accepted. That's pretty typical that we would use soil test dates that vary in timeframe.
Okay. The next question I have is, when was the actual land survey done? What was the date for the actual survey?
I could get that for you as well. I think that would have been updated when we resubmitted this current application.
I know. I saw the updates, but they were primarily static, but I'm looking for the actual date of the land survey.
Well, we would do an update that there would actually be physical on-ground work that's done.
So. But I'd like to know when the actual survey was done.
I'm not sure I understand it. The date on it, so the date of the survey would reflect conditions as of that date. So I know that all of the work was updated to show the changes on Palmer Avenue, for instance.
Okay, my last question. If you remember last, during the last meeting, I pointed out that the NJAC Stormwater Management Regulation requires that you do an impact test, the detention basin impact test on the water table nearby and in basements nearby. And you said that there were no basements in Palmer Square. But there are basements in Palmer Square. So what do you say now about not doing an impact test?
Yes, sir. Well, with all respect, I don't think I ever said there were no basements. I think I would have said I don't know whether they're basements. I think I would have said I don't know whether they're basements.
I see, sorry about that. Somebody said no basement, so I didn't know.
But I, I take, I take your point. Um the rules don't require it, so that's not quite the accurate term. The rules say you should take into account uh whether infiltration will impact the seasonal high water table, uh whether it would impact things in the surrounding area such as basements or septic systems. Uh and when we went to NJDEP and went through that process, they did not request that we do one. They did not think it was necessary here. Uh I don't think that it's necessary here based on the volume or infiltrating distances to buildings. I I personally don't think that it has a direct impact here. But I didn't say we didn't have to do one. I said we're not, we're not required to do one by NJDEP.
So could I ask a question? You have the map up there, and you have the detention basin right adjacent to the buffer zone.
Right.
What is the distance between the detention basin or actually the right wall of the detention basin to the nearest home on, in Palmer Square?
Uh that, that dimension is sixty-five feet.
And, and you don't think that the water, that it, let's say it's filled up, that water would not impact the groundwater conditions? And of course, and the basement eh within the sixty-five-feet area?
No, so you know, maybe as a quick sort of overview, uh if you think of water equalizing, like pouring a bucket of water into a pool and it equalizes. Uh in open water, that happens very quickly. Uh in soil, that might not happen as quickly because it moves through soil at a slower rate. So as I were to essentially put water from this basin into its location, it does equalize over time, and the seasonal high water table goes back to its existing elevation. Uh but as I put it in, how quickly does that happen? Um and so directly under the basin, you might have some rise in that seasonal high water table potentially, depending on how slow the soil move, water moves through the soil. Um but typically, you're, that, that's relatively uh minimal. It's a little lens over the seasonal high water table. And as soon as you're outside that basin, that's uh dropping away pretty rapidly. Uh so based on other ones that I've done in the past, uh in analysis like this, no, I don't think that there would be an impact here. Um and DEP did not require one, but like you you, you know, you raised the question here, I understand that, and I'm just answering that I don't think it's necessary.
Okay, thank you very much. That's all I have.
Sure. Okay, thank you. Do any other pla- um, the problem is the screen is still being shared, so I can't see if there's any other planning board members that want to have it, that have any questions. Anybody else have?
I'm gonna comment, watching that video, Mr. Zuckner did say that he was not sure if there were any basements, and then a resident, Mr. Locato, I believe, came on and confirmed that there are some basements over there.
Okay, all right, thank you. Alrighty, does anyone else have any, any questions? Okay. Um. All right, hold on. Okay, there you go. All right, Mrs., Mr. Uh Zimmerman, would you like to continue?
Yes, please. I'd like to call of recall Victor Barr. All right, or?
Okay.
Yes, I'm here. Who ha- Louis D., does Louis still have control of the exhibits?
Um.
Louis.
I might be, I might be able to put up your drawings, or Bonnie could potentially give you control.
Do you have your drawings? Can, Bonnie, can you give him control, please, so he can put his drawings up?
Hold on one second.
I do have your exhibits open if it's helpful at this point, then.
Yeah, well, maybe it's easier if Louis just controls it. I'm, I'm gonna run through, I'm gonna run through these real fast.
Louis is a co-host, he can share the exhibits.
I Okay, Louis.
There you go. Thank you, Brian.
I thought we, I thought Mr. Barr was going to share the, so that he could do it more easily, no?
Do I have control? Do I have the control now, or is this Louis?
Can you give it to Louis? Can you give it to Mr. Barr, please, so that way he can do his, it's his testimony, and he should be able to?
Okay. Okay. Both can share.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Barr.
All right, how do I get, how do I get control of it?
You should have it now. Go to the top of your screen.
No.
Will you bottom, depends on where you.
No.
Should say, share content?
So share screen, am I supposed to share my screen?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
There you go.
I don't see the exhibits, though.
Well, the, whatever's on your screen is gonna, there you go. Whatever's on your screen is going to show us, so you need to put your exhibits on your screen.
I thought they were gonna, they thought they were, I don't have the exhibits, that's why I thought that uh
Okay, Lou, can you, can you share your screen, Lou, and then Mr. Barr will just follow along?
Yeah, Louis, just bring up the exhibits, and I'll tell you which ones to go to.
Hey, Bonnie.
Okay, stay on this one.
One second, sorry. But Mr. Barr, one second, yes, Derek?
Hey, Bonnie, do you, am I able to vote on this next uh application? I have to run and pick up one of my kids from SATS.
Um you are not able to vote if you didn't. Did you watch the video from the last time?
No.
And you came back.
Yeah. Okay, so are you, are you leaving, Derek?
Yes, I have to excuse myself. That's okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Nine nine, uh eight nineteen.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Barr, you can proceed.
All right, uh what you're looking at now is a floor plan of a one-bedroom unit, approximately seven hundred and fifty square feet. And uh some of the questions that were asked at our last meeting was, do all the units have washer-dryers? And as you can see, there is a washer and dryer in this unit. All the units do have balconies. Um and off of the balconies, you will see the mechanical room that houses all the equipment, all the HVAC equipment for this unit, which eliminates uh any exposed equipment. So Louis, go to one, go to fourteen. Which is the exit distance, the next one. Remind, can you go to the next one? Okay, another question was, what is the travel distance to the exit from, from the unit? So as you can see, this two-bedroom co-op unit looks like it's the one that's in the middle of the building. The exit requirement, or the exit in one direction is two hundred and ten feet. In the other direction, it is uh two hundred and thirty feet. The IBC code says that the maximum travel distance to an exit is two hundred and fifty feet. So in the worst-case scenario in this unit, we are still uh you know, well below the maximum exit requirement for travel distance. Go to the elevator one, which I believe is the next one. Okay, under, under the IBC code, the elevator must be able to accommodate a um a gurney or a, or a stretcher for emergency, emergency exit. And the requirement is, it must be able to uh to accommodate a size of eighty-four inches by twenty-four inches. And this cut of the elevator at the bottom in yellow, you can see that it does accommodate the eighty-four by twenty-four inch uh stretcher size for emergency, emergency um exit. All right, can you go to the bar, the elevation? All right, so the, there you go. So the ground floor, the ground floor of the building is, is a composition of, there are, there are masonry um peers that, that frame the openings that go into the garages. In those openings are decorative uh metal fencing, and the, the masonry piers and the metal fencing creates a backdrop for the landscaping and the tree, the line of trees that accent the, the entrance drive in, into the building. The top floor of the building is proposed in a lighter uh material in order to visually reduce the height of the building and also uh you know, give some kind of uniqueness to the upper floor of the building. The um, the dormers on the roof combined with the hip roof projections that uh come out from the building create a more residential, you know, scale and character, you know, to the building. The protruding balconies um help create interest and movement along the, along the facade. So I think in, in all, when we combine all these uh different elements, we're creating a building that has, that is very residential on character and creates a visual interest uh you know, along the uh, the street frontage. Can you do the next one, which is the sign, um Louis? So there's been, uh, there's been a couple of comments about the sign. The sign drawing that was accompanying the engineering drawings was a um it, it depicted what the, what the constraints and parameters of the sign ordinance wa- are. This is an actual design of the sign, which does accommodate the um the twelve, the maximum twelve-square footage of signage, the height, a maximum of three feet. You will see that it also picks up the architectural elements of the building. The masonry is, is in fact the masonry that is in the piers of the first floor of the building. So architecturally, it coordinates and is consistent with the materials and visual effect of the building um that's proposed. And uh that's essentially all I have. Any, any questions?
Madam Chairwoman, I have a question.
Gosh, I'm sorry, I was on mute.
Okay, yeah, um this is to our, our planning board engineer, Bob Uro. Bob, can you hear me?
Uh yes, I can, sir.
Okay, so according to our development regulations, if I read it correctly, the maximum height allowed is forty-five feet. Is that right?
Um with regards to the height, I, I would have to go back and check. I'm not sure, Mr. Um Mr. Crash, but I would defer to Ms. Beam on anything with regards to building height, and if you're going towards a variance.
Yeah, the maximum height.
The ordinance says fifty feet, maximum building height, fifty feet.
Okay, so, so Mr. Barr, last time when we spoke, um you said that the top floor is fifty feet um above the ground. I used to talk, is that the top of the top floor, or if I stand on the top? Which is fifty feet?
Uh the height of the building is measured from the average grade to the average height of the roof.
Yep.
Good.
According to, according to your ordinance. So according to your ordinance, that's fifty feet.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else have a question? Okay, seeing none. Mrs. Zimmerman, you can continue.
Uh that's all I, that's all I have, uh Madam Chair Lady. I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Melenic for his cross.
Certainly. Mr. Melenic, the floor is yours.
Thank you. And uh Mr. Zimmerman, while you were uh figuring out your, your computer issues, I'll just reiterate what I re- I said to the board. Thank you for your courtesies at last month's hearing, uh given my, my family's health issues. It's much appreciated.
Sure.
Uh so Madam Chairwoman, before I get into the cross, because I wasn't here last, I, I wonder if it's appropriate now to just introduce myself and my client and, and the reason?
Oh yes, please. And um your professional will have him um uh authenticate himself and swear him in before we continue. So start with yourself, and then your professional can, can um introduce himself as well.
That would be fine, that would be fine. Uh thank you again uh to the, to the board. Uh I am Steve Melenic. I'm a partner with uh Greenbaum, Rose Smith &amp; Davis. And I'm here representing the Palmer Square Condominium Association, Inc. As the board was made aware last month, I've represented Palmer Square Condominium Association, which is the entity that manages the common elements of the Palmer Square condominium, located directly adjacent to the subject property to its north um for the past several years. Uh just to be clear, I've been retained by the association, which is a corporation entity. I've not been retained by any individual homeowner uh with, that, that lives there. And uh I mentioned this, and I think it's important because in reviewing the video from last month's hearing, I know there was some comments uh or at least one comment about whether or not um individuals living there may be able to comment or ask questions. I don't know if I interpreted that wrong, but of course, they're all individuals and tax-paying members of, of Home Del, so uh I would hope and expect that they're all given the same three minutes uh to be able to make comments and ask questions. Uh one important fact upfront about Palmer Square, almost one in four of all the units within Palmer Square are affordable housing units. Members of the board in the past and currently are owners of some of those units, and the association in no way is opposed to affordable housing. Its concerns regarding this project are the same that it was back many years ago when the original application was before, before this board. Um and that are its concerns regarding how it's going to impact the um ever-present flooding issues on Palmer Avenue, as well as other concerns that the proposal in front of you tonight uh is gonna impose on them. We've reviewed it. We know it's as of right. We know the zoning has changed, but we still believe it is inconsistent with the ordinance. Um and at the very least, there are additional things that can be modified or requested by this board uh before a decision is made. We have one expert witness to present to the board, Mr. Brian Murphy, a professional engineer, who will intend to call at the appropriate time. Now may be a good time to swear him in and get his credentials before I continue.
Yes, please. Mr. Murphy?
Hello?
Go ahead.
You swear to the truth, so I'll be there? I do. Okay, just spell your name for the record, please. Brian Murphy, M U R P H Y.
Okay, and can you get, tell us a little bit about yourself, Mr. Murphy?
Sure, I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey. I've been practicing engineering since nineteen ninety-nine. I'm a principal at FWH Associates in Tom's River. Um I've appeared before about a hundred boards throughout the state, uh been qualified by the court system as well. Um I'm a graduate of New Jersey Institute of Technology and uh civil engineering as well.
Great. Is he acceptable to the board as a, as a professional? Everybody just shake your heads, okay. Also, for the record, um Tom King was not present on roll call, but he has been in the, in the meeting the whole time. Um I don't know if Bill pointed that out, but I want to make sure that it's pointed out for this application, that he was here from the beginning of this application and is eligible to vote. Um just for the record. Okay, all righty, go ahead, Mr. Melenic.
I, I'd like at this time to cross-examine the applicant's engineer, Mr. Zuckner.
Certainly. Mr. Zuckner?
I just, I'm looking for him, I'm sorry. There he is.
Right here, sir.
Yep, I see. Um
A lot of people on.
Lot of, the Brady Bunch. Um you were involved in the planning board application back in twenty sixteen on this site, is that correct?
Yes.
You were the engineer that prepared the plans back then, and you provided testimony to the board?
Correct.
That, that application uh was for sixty residential uh units in one multifamily building, is that correct?
The six, I believe so, yes.
Okay, that's the same density being applied for in the same building count as this application?
Yes.
Okay. Uh if I were to conclude that Okay. Uh, if I were to conclude that the 2016 application was denied by the planning board principally or primarily due to flooding concerns, would you, would you agree with that?
I don't want to make that judgment.
Okay. Uh, but you are aware of the flooding issues in this area?
Absolutely, yes.
And they were a, uh, key topic of discussion at multiple hearings during the 2016 hearings?
Yeah, yes.
Uh, and you're obviously aware that my client, uh, is a, is a neighboring property owner, uh, to the north of this site?
I do know that, yes.
They've expressed concerns regarding, uh, the, the levels of flooding on Palmer Avenue since 2016 at the latest, at the least?
Uh, right, I would assume they've expressed concerns for longer than that.
Okay. Uh, can you describe generally the differences between the two applications? Or the plans, rather, I should, correction.
I'm sure I know exactly if you want me to go through from a technical perspective or from.
High, high, high level. High, high, high level, what's, what has changed in the site plan that was applied for in 2016 and the one that's applied for before the board tonight?
A number of means of how we've, uh, designed stormwater for the site, uh, how we've designed parking for the site, because of course, a big percentage of the parking is now under the building. Uh, the parking is also now RSIS compliant and count, which is a big difference. Obviously, the unit makeup, uh, in terms of affordable versus market rate, some other elements of the building have changed. Uh, there are a number of other, uh, minor elements throughout the site in terms of how we have developed the frontage of the site and how we've landscaped it and, uh, so there, I think that's sort of a high view, if that's what you're looking for.
Sure. So some things that haven't changed, uh, obviously, we mentioned the unit count, uh, we mentioned the building count. The ingress and egress, there's still one way in, one way out, right, to Palmer Avenue?
Yes, but that's pretty typical of a 60-unit building.
Okay. Any changes to the plans from back in that application to this one for emergency vehicles, ambulances, fire trucks? You've mentioned now there's parking under, under the building, so that's a change, right?
Parking under the building, certainly a change.
Uh, you may not be aware, because I know it was many years ago and you probably didn't review it for this, so that's fine, but I will ask it anyway. Did you review or see or, um, well, did you review the resolution denying the 2016 application? You, if you don't remember that.
Yeah, I don't remember. I'm certainly aware of it, whether I actually went through it or not, I, I can't say.
There are certain findings of fact that were made then. I'd like to read a few of them very briefly and then ask you questions on it. I'm not trying to make comment now, I just want to preempt, preface since you don't remember. Uh, in that resolution, there were a couple of findings of fact. One of them was the firsthand knowledge of the board members of the numerous flooding events on Palmer Avenue and the resulting serious safety concerns on both residents gaining access egress, as well as for emergency vehicles gaining access to the site resulting them, their from. And the second, the uncontradicted testimony of the various witnesses of the numerous flooding events on Palmer Avenue of at least five to eight times per year, and the serious safety concerns on both residents gaining access egress, as well as for the emergency vehicles gaining access to the site. So my question is, those were the findings of fact of this board's four years ago. You've mentioned that the access, the ingress to the property has not changed, it's still one way in, one way out. I'm curious, what has changed that this board could have a different finding of fact four years later from what they found back in 2016?
If you're asking me, uh, for what technically or physically has changed at the site, the frontage has changed, it's higher, the county has installed road improvements, including drainage inlets, uh, and our entrance point to Palmer Avenue is a little over a foot higher than it had been previously.
But do you have any, you, do you have any personal knowledge as to whether those specific items that the county has done to, we'll call them improvements, has had an effect?
I have no, uh, no analysis that could give an answer as to what improvement has been resolved.
Are you aware of any flooding events since the county has raised the road by 18? I, I believe it's 18 inches, correct me if I'm wrong? In certain areas?
Uh, it's about 18 inches over the culvert, I believe. Um, I, I've tried to contact, uh, go through a number of people to find out what specifically the improvements have been and what the result has been, but like I said, I don't have an analysis saying how much better it is or what improvements happened.
I want to turn to the testimony you gave at the last hearing, and, um, you were asked about it before tonight, so that cut out some of my questions, but regarding the groundwater mounding analysis. You testified and, and I just watched the video again in preparation for this, you're correct, you said you thought they didn't have basements, so I'll, that's correct. Mr. Yaro, I think, was the one who said they were built on slab. Um, so I'll ask you, and, uh, if Mr. Yaro wants to come, comment, obviously, I cannot ask him a question. Um, but, but at the last hearing, you, you indicated, and Mr. Yaro did as well, that they weren't performed both because the DEP didn't require it, but you didn't feel it was necessary because of the lack of basements. And you updated that comment earlier today, now with the knowledge of having, uh, that there are basements. Um, but given the history here, that's so known, there's no question about it, given the fact that it's only 65 feet away, why shouldn't the board, or why couldn't the board make a request for you to perform that analysis to confirm, uh, that it doesn't have any negative, uh, results?
I certainly can't tell the board what to do.
If the board were to ask you for that, would that be something the applicant would be willing to perform?
I, I can't answer that. Perhaps our attorney could or someone else could, but I don't know the answer to that.
Okay. Uh, one of the first things you testified about was the Morris Brook, and you made a commitment, or on behalf of the applicant, to de-snag the brook. Is that correct?
Yes.
All right, can you, can you, for those of us who are not engineers, could you describe to the board and the rest of us what de-snagging the brook means?
In layman's term, it means one or more people getting, uh, wet and muddy and removing branches, uh, leaf debris and other litter that would inhibit or prohibit water from moving through the Mahoros Brook.
And you mentioned a commitment on behalf of the applicant to do that? In what, the entire brook?
My understanding is that would have been the length of our, our property line.
Okay. Uh, what is exactly the commitment? How often would it be done?
So I guess we probably could come back to you with an answer as to what that exact commitment was. My understanding was the length of our property, uh, and to do it as needed, but, um.
I, I, I think it's important that you do, because anytime an applicant makes an offer or commitment to the board, it's obviously something that the board may rely on in making their decisions. So it's important to understand exactly what's being promised. Um, I would certainly be interested in knowing what the terms of that commitment would be, how long it would last for, how the length of the area that the brook is going to be de-snagged, when it's going to be done, what would happen if that commitment is breached? Um, I think these are all very important questions that the, the board should, uh, should know. Uh, so thank you for promising to get that. All right. I want to ask you, uh, some questions about, um, the elevations. I know you updated the plans, um, on the 18th. Just bear with me, let me pull something up here. So on your initial plans, it showed an elevation of the spillway at 29.4. Did that change in your resubmission?
The, the emergency spillway elevation has not changed.
Okay. Uh, same, I'm going to ask you a series of them. It's the same question, did it change from your resubmission? Uh, your original was at the top of your berm, your elevation was 30.5. Is that the cha- is that still the case?
Uh, on which side of the berm, along the, the back towards the Mahoros Brook?
Exactly.
Yes.
Yeah. Uh, the 100-year storm elevation, did that change, that elevation?
Uh, the 100-year water surface elevation in the latest plan sets is 29.33.
That's what I have, okay. Uh, a couple of elevations we couldn't tell from the plans is the northeast and northwest corners of the basin. Are you able to provide those elevations?
Uh, we put in, uh, spot shots along that property line, putting them in at, um, just at or just below elevation 30.
On the north side, you have, you're showing two small inlets. You have the elevation of those grates?
Uh, the outlet structure, the grate is 29.25. Is the top of the grate. Uh, the other one is just a, a manhole for a bend, so that's a turn in the pipe. So the rim of that would just be a surface grate, water wouldn't come in and out of that, but.
Mr. Murphy will get into those, the importance of those elevations a little later. Um, do you know what direction the water flows between my client's property and the Barclay Square property?
Uh, well, I think that that's different at different points along the property line.
Focus on the north, the, the northern part of your property where the basin is, and I, and, and just apologize, not the northern part of your property, but of the development area.
So I think I understand where you mean the area we've talked about as the buffer?
Correct.
Right. Uh, that area, there's about, uh, things around point three or a third of an acre that drains from your client's property, Palmer Square, towards us.
Was that taken into consideration at all when you prepared your plans?
So it was, we collect that into the basin, uh, and, uh, this part of what we made in this last change to make sure we get that into the basin. Uh, I had gone back and looked at, um, how that's routed through our basin, and in the original designs, that additional third of an acre was not part of the actual routing. And when we reran it, uh, it has almost no change to the water surface elevation and could be routed through the basin, uh, without impact, uh, even if we didn't. So as off-site flow, you could actually flow it right through, uh, and release it, and even if we retained it, that would still be contained within the basin as it's designed.
Uh, what, where would the water go if there's an overflow in the basin right now as, as designed?
Uh, would go over the emergency spillway, that's what that's designed for. So whether that was due to failure of some kind, or a storm that exceeded 100-year storm, would go over that emergency spillway and into the Mahoros Brook.
Same, same question, if there's a failure, if it's not just an overflow, but a failure of the basin in some regard, same answer?
Same answer.
If the Palmer Square site drains onto Parkly, wouldn't the water just accumulate then because of the, the berm? Wouldn't there, wouldn't there be, let me rephrase that, the grading that you, you're proposing on your property, okay? If the, if the water flows from Palmer onto Barclay, now because of that grading, isn't that going to create a low point?
Not through the, the buffer or the basin. I, I think that, um, it's in one of the exhibits you put on the website, there's an area right at the front of Palmer Avenue, a very small area, where perhaps there's a couple of spot shots or grading that could be improved there to prevent that spot from being a low point, but that's a pretty insignificant area in terms of rainfall.
All right. I know you've talked about changes to, I think you created a path for access to the basin, is that correct?
We did.
Okay, how do you access that?
So I think as you'd heard the architect explain, there's a fencing that encloses the parking under the building. So we've proposed out the back a means of having, like you would have a gate to a pool area, gate access. Uh, it would take some management control, because it would be through the parking area, uh, and, uh, would have to be at a scheduled time, and you could get access through there with equipment. You could all, you can walk back to the basin, but you'd get equipment through that way, and then it's been graded to create a path so the equipment could make its way to the basin.
Okay, but equipment wouldn't, that, that wouldn't be accessible in an emergency situation if there are cars parked there? In front of that accessway?
Uh, that, right, that would need some plan.
Okay, so this is really only in, in for your, your regular maintenance?
Be for regular maintenance. Um, at the same time, um, you know, getting equipment to a basin takes some setup regardless of the circumstances, would not be equipment that's kept on site, other than perhaps lawnmowers. Um, so if someone needed to get into the basin for an emergency, that's someone you need to bring to the site.
Well, I think, I think at the last meeting, there was testimony that each resident is going to have a designated space, so am I understanding it correctly, that whoever gets designated, those couple of spaces are going to be inconvenienced anytime there's maintenance needed?
Uh, that, that'd be something we'd have to look at in terms of management.
All right. Um, I know, I know you provided testimony and it's on the plans, but can you, what kind of fence is there being proposed around the basin right now?
Uh, around the basin, this?
Yeah. Not maybe, to keep, to keep intruders out or to keep any children from getting there?
Uh, the basin is not, uh, fenced in to preclude people from getting in. There's a fence along the conservation easement.
So then there's a split rail fence?
Correct.
By the basin?
Correct.
Is that, that sufficient?
I don't personally believe in fencing in basins.
Okay. Uh, that's all the, the cross-examination I have. Mr. Zugner?
Madam Chair, if I could just clarify for the record, um, I think there was a question about the de-snagging. The ordinance specifically under section 30-137J5 requires that the stream within the property line of this site be de-snagged by the developer twice per year.
Jen, is that in perpetuity?
Looks like it, yeah. I mean, it's a requirement in the ordinance, so yes. And I do think, uh, Mr. Mayor, that that also was included in the developer's agreement with this particular developer when the affordable housing negotiations were taking place as well. So yes, it's twice per year within their property in perpetuity, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Jen. Okay.
Madam Chairwoman, I have some questions for the traffic engineer, but I don't know if, if my line of questioning's inspired any questions from the board for, um, Mr. Zugner?
Uh, are there any questions for Mr. Zugner, um, from the board?
The. Couple of questions on redirect, if I might.
Certainly, Mrs. Zimmerman. And Mr. Mayor, did you have a question?
Can I jump in real quick?
Sure.
So, 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 um, this may be a question that I may need Jen, um, to answer is, is what, what is our normal township position on fencing around a basin or any other type of, um, water holding tanks like this thing?
So like the basin like that, or like a wet pond or something of that nature?
Anything, I mean, any depth to it, yeah.
So typically, it's done at the board level on a case-by-case circumstance. So as an example, if it's, you know, within a commercial shopping center, typically, we don't worry about, you know, kids playing, because it's usually like next to a parking lot for a shopping center. In areas where we have, you know, potential for kids or what have you, um, you know, in many instances, it's the split rail fence with like the mesh, which is like the anti-climb mesh, so you can still see through it, and it looks, you know, somewhat rural in nature, less kind of chain link institutional, um, but the mesh kind of is a deterrent for climbing. Um, but in the event that somebody were to be in the basin, you can still see them get over the fence into the basin to, you know, if a kid were to get in there. What's the depth, Lou, from like the top of the water, like at the worst-case scenario, water elevation at the top and the, you know, like, so what's the depth of the water that would be in the basin for any prolonged period of time?
So the, I mean, the absolute worst condition is the 100-year storm, and it would be about three feet deep.
So I mean, you know, the chain link, I would, I, I don't really know if the mesh was there, I don't remember seeing it, but, you know, that's something that you may want to encourage, because it doesn't allow a kid to kind of go through the, the split rail fence, and it's difficult to climb. It's kind of a deterrent to the climbing, but it still maintains that look as opposed to, you know, I've seen basins that have the chain link around, and they're kind of like isolated, it looks kind of weird. So it's something that, um, you guys can certainly ask, but we don't have a hard and fast requirement. It comes on a case-by-case basis, and most often where there's potential for kids to, you know, go into the basin.
I, I'm uncomfortable with the split rail and, and not having some type of blockage protection from children to be able just to wander in there, uh, because the neighborhood next door has a lot of children, and this neighborhood may eventually have a lot of children.
The neighborhood probably will. Um, can we put the mesh on it? Is that, would that satisfy you? Like, we, we have the mesh, I think, around, um, the. the split rail and the mesh is on by Best Buy in the commons, isn't it? Yes.
Madam Chair, Bob Euro.
Okay, sir, I, you know, I can't see this too many, okay, there you go.
Yes. I, I agree with Jen and it's been my experience for these types of detention basins to go with the split rail with some sort of a mesh. My experience, it's twofold. If you tend to put a chain link with a gate and a fence, it, it tends to hinder emergency personnel trying, trying to get through there quickly. But we have seen success with keeping children out with that split rail fence with, with the non-climbable mesh attached to it.
Okay. Mrs. Zimmerman, do you, do you think your, a client will have any, would be adverse to adding the mesh around the split rail fence?
Sure, that'll be fine.
Okay, thank you. Alrighty, okay, Mrs. Zimmerman, you had to, you had some?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Yeah, Louis, Mr. Malanik asked you a number of questions comparing the application four years ago for a different developer with this application, I'd like to explore that a little bit with you. Four years ago, there were multiple variances that were required, were there not for that application?
I recall a long list of variances and waivers.
Yes, as a matter of fact, and the, and the resolutions are obviously part of the board's record. They start with the variance A and they go all the way through variance X as in xylophone. So it's a lot of variances, no?
It's a lot to ask for, yes.
And how many variances are we requesting?
None.
He also talked about the parking being under the building. Would you elaborate on that a little bit more as to where the parking was in the last application and where it is in this application?
So all the parking was at greater surface parking in the prior application. Which, of course, putting it under the building helps limit impervious coverage. But that application is, you're just sort of speaking to, had a number of items of relief on parking, they had insufficient parking, they did not meet RSIS.
So how many spaces do we have under the building, do you know?
We believe we have approximately half under the building. And I can tell you exactly in one moment. We have fifty-seven under the building.
And four years ago, how many were under the building?
Zero.
And four years ago, had the county made any improvements to Palmer Avenue?
They had not.
And what improvements have been made in those last four years?
So there were improvements both to the surface elevation of the road and then the shoulder of the road, particularly on our side, which is now curved with sidewalk and drainage structures, inlets and pipe. And then the head wall, the outlet at the edge of the road where it connects to the stream, that's all been improved and changed.
Now, this current application has three rain gardens, is that correct?
It does, yes.
And what are the grain gardens?
Rain gardens are additional surface areas to help collect and infiltrate water, thus reducing what would runoff from the site. And if you recall, when I went through testimony originally, I talked about how while those elements are on the site and would be an improvement, they're actually not even included within the necessary stormwater controls. So we meet all of the requirements by ordinance and by NJDEP's rules without them. We've added them anyway as additional or supplemental stormwater features.
Were there rain gardens four years ago?
I don't believe there were, I don't recall specifically all the elements of that stormwater, although I know it was substantially different in how we had addressed it.
And how was it substantially different?
There were other elements of underground storage in different areas. At that time, the road elevation was higher, so we were trying to control some runoff to Palmer Avenue, which in this case is all being directed back and further downstream into the Mahors Brook.
That's all I have, Madam Chairwoman.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chairwoman, I have a follow-up question based on Mr. Zimmerman's question.
Sure. Sure, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Zugner. Mr. Zimmerman just pointed out that the previous application had a host of variance requests. And this time you pointed out there was zero request for a variance. Giving us the impression it's a much improved application. One of the variance requests for exact was for the three to one slope. And you just pointed out to me when I asked you that the slope is exactly the same, hasn't changed, still a three to one slope. But there's some other superseding regulation that supersedes our development regulation. And therefore you don't need a variance. Could you tell me why it didn't, why it didn't supersede the development regulation requirement back then?
I appreciate your question, I don't think I can really talk to how or why the ordinance was written.
Prakash, I believe that there is, what he referred to is that there's a new ordinance that was adopted by a previous governing body that now allows for the slope to be three to one. I think that your point may be well made in the fact that the ordinance was was created to allow for this development to be, or a development to be built to adapt to the judge's ruling of, for affordable housing. With Marty or Jen, is that a correct way to put it?
All right, well, definitely for the slope, that's a fair statement.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Madam.
Okay, someone else has a question?
I, I would defer if it was a board member, but I do have some follow-up questions.
No, I think it was you, go ahead.
And obviously I'll be limited to the redirect. The questions that Mr. Zimmerman just asked you, Mr. Zugner, with respect to the improvements on Palmer Avenue. You did not provide any engineering services to the county of Monmouth with respect to those improvements, did you?
We did not.
Okay, you have not performed any study of those improvements and the effect that they've had on the flooding issues on Palmer Avenue, have you?
No, we surveyed the existing conditions after the work was completed.
Okay, so I am correct in stating that the testimony given regarding improvements made along that road should not be interpreted as any expert testimony by you that they will have an actual impact on improving flooding along that road, is that correct?
I wouldn't say it that way, I mean, the county did those improvements for the express purpose of addressing flooding on the road.
But you have no knowledge whether they're going to work or not? You weren't involved, did it do, or do any study to determine whether that was an appropriate course of action or will have any impact, right?
I did not personally study it or design it.
Okay, and I'll, I'll address Mr. Zimmerman's questions regarding, or the variances in our argument later, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Alrighty, you want to, you have a, move on to your next cross?
Yeah, I have very limited questions for the, for the traffic engineer.
Okay. Ms. Feranda?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening.
Mr. Feranda, you remain under oath, correct?
Yes, understood.
So the last hearing, you, you, you recall there were significant concerns and questions and some comments made by the public regarding the school buses and where they're going to pick up and drop off children for the children located in this project?
There was a question or two, yes.
Yeah, I believe in your testimony, you had mentioned one bus, but I'm not sure if you'd like to correct that now, how many buses would actually have to serve this?
No, I did not speak to how many buses it would be. I mentioned that the Board of Education determines bus schedules, bus routes. And we would have to abide by whatever the Board of Education requires of us.
Is there, is there an industry standard in your world for determining the length of time a bus would stop? And what the impact that would have on traffic on a road?
Again, I would defer to the Board of Education, that depends on the number of students at any given stop. It depends on the age of the students, high school students might arrive and depart in a quicker manner than grade school or younger, so that's not really something that can be determined by a traffic study, it's variable.
So you, when you perform a traffic, and I understand it's not common that you'll have to take into account a, a school bus stop on a road like this. But when you do, you don't incorporate any analysis with respect to an impact, say, four schools in Homedale, four buses in the morning, four buses in the afternoon would have on a road like Palmer Avenue?
No, that's, that's up to the police department, that's up to the Board of Education. They determine the routes and the scheduling of those. And how that's going to impact the road is really out of the hands of the applicant and out of the hands of myself for analysis.
Okay, no more, no further questions?
Does anyone have any further questions for?
Madam Chairwoman, Prakash is attending.
Sure, I'll let you go.
Mr. Feranda, just to confirm, last time at, at the, at the last hearing, you said that you did not do a traffic study analysis of what happens when there are school buses during prime time?
Yes, we did not analyze what a bus stop would do to the roadway traffic, correct?
In front of Barclay Square.
Excuse me, I missed that.
In, in front of Barclay Square on Palmer Avenue.
Correct.
Thank you.
Serena, I have a question. In regards to T and M's letter, page three, Bob's traffic impact. The first paragraph, it talks about a five, approximately five-year-old traffic counts. I just want to know if you've upgraded your traffic counts to correct to the conditions?
Yes, and I had mentioned that in my previous testimony, we use the NJDOT traffic growth rates. It's prescribed by the DOT, one percent per year to grow our traffic. And that was due, we could not go out and get new traffic during COVID conditions because the traffic is, even to this day, traffic is down from the previous year. So our traffic, fortunately, we did have some good traffic data from the past and we were able to use the prescribed growth rates that the DOT gives us to get a base traffic and then we work from there.
Okay, so then you have upgraded?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Counted for that.
Okay. Mrs. Zimmerman, do you have any questions of your, of the traffic engineer?
No, I do not.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Feranda, Mr. Miller, I'm sorry, I'm butchering your name, can I just call you Steve? Thank you.
I have no questions for the architect, so if there is no further testimony, I'd like to, from the applicant, I'd like to welcome Mr. Murphy.
Is that okay with you, Mr., do you have any further testimony, Mrs. Zimmerman?
Nothing further, nope.
Okay, thank you, go ahead, Steve.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Been sworn in?
I have.
As an expert in engineering?
I have been.
You have reviewed all the plans on this application, including the resubmitted plans on the eighteenth, is that correct?
I have.
You've had an opportunity to review those plans and reports?
Yes.
In your opinion, do they satisfy the ordinance of Homedale? And, and with respect to stormwater?
We have a few issues that need to be addressed regarding.
Walk the board through them.
Sure.
Do you need the ability to share your screen?
Yes, please.
Bonnie? Thank you. Mr. Murphy needs to share a screen.
Can everybody see that?
Yes.
Okay, so just very quickly, so the, the pre and post development plans.
Right, right, real quick, if you could identify what we're looking at, we can provide a, an exhibit number to it.
This is the post development plan prepared by Midlandic. Sheet two, two, I'm just looking at the date, see all the plans, it's just, it hasn't changed. Last revised ten twenty-seven twenty.
Oh, one, you want to call this oh one?
Sure. So the, the pre and post development plan aren't taking into account the flow from Palmer Square, which comes roughly from the, the center of the buildings because the, the roof drains flow that way as well. It's about a half an acre coming down towards Palmer, towards Barclay. They don't have to reduce that flow, but they do have to accommodate it, put it into the basin and then, you know, route it through. So that, that, that's one issue that, that has come to light. The other issue is coming along, and this one I'm going to refer to again, it's Midlandic's plan, it's the sheet eight of eighteen. And it's last revised eleven four twenty. Again, the, the elevations of the grades and spillways as, as testified haven't changed. Along this property line, the north property line, there have been some additional spot grades indicated. Elevations of twenty-nine point six are added along this property line. But you'll note, just to the north of that, there's existing elevations of twenty-nine five, there's twenty-nine two. So what's happening now with elevating that property line even more? It's actually trapping the water along the property line so that it's not getting into those inlets any longer that are proposed along the north side of, of the building. Also in that northeast corner of the property where it indicates, creates low point. Again, that, that's trapping water in that location. It's going to hold, hold that water until it overflows, there's about, you know, it's a twenty-eight point seven, seven elevation there. So that, that's, that's an issue, we, we just need to have that picked up so we're not trapping water. The other issue is right in that same location, you have two twenty-nine contours with no elevation in between, you can only assume it's higher than twenty-nine. But essentially that, that becomes a secondary spillway. The current spillway is that twenty-nine four, there's a twenty-nine two elevation just to the northeast of the yard inlet, the nearest yard inlet. I'm assuming, you know, that there's not a lot of distance between those, those two contours, so I'm assuming that's going to be relatively low as well. So that's a concern as well, that the spillway may actually function out towards the roadway as well instead of out the back as, as planned. And as you can see, the, the yard inlets that are to the north are at twenty-two five. So at the hundred year, this entire area is flooded out, it becomes part of the basin, functions as part of the basin. And then that, the larger problem that occurs is the, the top of the berm is at thirty point five. However, as you come across to that northwest end, you can see that the thirty contour wraps back into itself. And drops back down, and then you notice there's an existing contour running along our property of an elevation thirty, which tells you there's a lower elevation than the twenty-nines in between these two points. So that also can wind up acting as a, as a secondary spillway. Instead of the main spillway where it's designed to go, it would actually be coming out onto the Palmer Square property. And more of a concern is, so the top of berm is thirty point five. If you look at where thirty point five is on the Palmer Square property, because the basin doesn't stop at our property line, that the, there's no top of berm along that, that north, north side of the basin along the property line. It would actually come into our property about thirty to forty feet at least, and some areas may even further. It would actually come into our property about 30 to 40 feet at least, and some areas may even further. There's no elevations on, on the corner of these buildings, so I'm, I'm not sure if it even, may even reach those buildings, it's hard to tell. But I think there, there needs to be more spot elevations in here. And we need that, that 30 contour to wrap around along the property line so that at least their basins contained on their property. Rather than using the Palmer Square property for, as part of the basin and then, and top of, top of the berm around the basin. That's really the, the main issues. I, it's, you know, we're concerned about the access to the basin. I think they've addressed that coming through. You know, it's coming through the parking lot, you know, the emergency access. Sounds like it's going to be a little interesting if, if, if that comes to pass, but, you know, trying to get some cars out of the way to get access back there. That, that's, that's pretty much the crux of our issues with the drainage.
So Brian, in, in, if I was able to sum up these issues, as you call them, they are in general, that as designed, it could result in either spillover or ponding or water accumulating on our property as a result of this development. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. No further questions.
Thank you. Does that, do any of our planning board members have questions for Mr. Murphy?
I do, Ms. Madam Chairwoman.
Sure, go ahead.
Yeah. Mr. Murphy, this is Precash Santana, I have a question for you.
Sure.
I asked a question about doing an impact analysis within that 65-foot area where there are basements in your, in your property. And Mr. Zygna said it was not required. What is your opinion on that?
Typically, under the current rules, it would be, it would be required, well, it, it's guidance documents, the DAP generally requires them going forward, but I believe this predated, was probably submitted before those came into effect. And again, it's, it's, it's really what the risk is at this point, you know, we're, we're looking at a bottom elevation of 26. If there's a basement in those buildings across, adjacent to it, more than likely, it's less than 26. So that there, there could be an issue there with, with mounding. I just don't know, wouldn't know that answer, you know, obviously coming off the, off the cuff if there would be an impact. But it's certainly possible.
Are she done?
Yeah, thank you, thank you.
Real quick, Serena?
Sure, sure. Could we not, can we unshare the screen so that I can see all the board members again, please?
Brian, quick question, and if you don't have an answer, that's fine. Over a 10-year period with a road being raised, could that have a impact on the water table in this area?
A road being raised?
If the road that serves this community, Palmer Avenue was raised, or if you took a water level table reading 11 years ago and during those 11 years, you changed the topography of the road and raised it three feet, would, would that have, could that have any impact on the water table in this area?
I would find it unlikely.
Okay.
And unless the waters, if the roadway opening below, you know, basically at the stream level restricted it, but the DAP typically would not permit that. That there's regulations within DAP that, that would restrict how, how much the water level could rise in the streams. They're, they're very cognizant on keeping base flow in the streams. I would find it unlikely.
Could a, another housing development nearby called 40-plus acres with the removal of trees and the building of houses, could that have an impact on the water table in this neighboring area?
It could, it could. Yeah, it, it, you can start changing, you know, but the way that we have to recharge water now and the recharge requirements, you're actually introducing more water into the ground. And in some cases, you know, my opinion, more than you, you really need to be. But also, if you look at the stream, that the streams aren't really modeled for, you, you can actually be changing the peak flows in certain locations downstream, which typically isn't studied all that often to see what the impact would be. But that, that can certainly happen.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions from any members of the planning board? Seeing none, Mrs. Zimmerman, do you have any questions?
Just a couple. Mr. Murphy, could I ask you to pull up the screen share again?
Sure. Rating plan?
Let's see, yes, yes, that one.
Sure.
Yeah, you went through a, a number of concerns that you had. Would it be fair to characterize those as fairly minor matters that could be addressed with a revision of the plans?
Some of them, that the, the top of berm being at 30.5, I think is going to be a little more challenging.
Okay.
They can, they, you know, that, to not have the water trapped against the property line, I, I think they, you know, that can start to be figured out. You know, obviously picking up the low point, you know, it's just a matter of adding an inlet, I would say. The, you know, the, the concern of, of the water acting as a spillway coming, coming out towards the, the roadway. You know, I think, I think that could probably be resolved relatively easily. But the, the top of berm and the possible spillway out in the northwest corner onto the Palmer property, I think that may be a little more challenging.
Northwest corner or the northeast corner?
No, it, it would actually be in the northwest corner of property, the, the, where the 30 contour kind of goes back.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I, I got my, my directions mixed.
No, there, there's another concern going northeast, the, towards the roadway, but I, I think that, that's, that can be worked out. I think it's going to be a little more challenging, getting that, that 30 contour to kind of enclose the, the basin.
So it'd be fair to say that those are the two major issues that you've identified? And the other issues can be, are manageable, can be solved by some tweaks to the plans?
From the issues that I brought up, yes.
Nothing further.
Thank you.
Madam Chairwoman, I have no further witnesses but reserved for argument following Mr. Zimmerman's conclusion.
Okay. Can we unshare the screen, please?
Sorry.
Yes, okay. Okay. Does any, any of the planning board members have any questions? For anyone? Okay, seeing none. I'm going to open to the public. It is, now, actually, what I'm going to do is, does anybody need a quick break? Or do you want to just power through? But I see Precash shaking his head, okay, because we've been on for two and a, two and a half hours, right, so it's, it's 9:20. Let's come back at 9:25, give everybody five minutes. You know, you don't have to close out, just five minutes, and then when we come back, we'll open to the public. I see that we have some 45 attendees plus the, you know, so I will allow for everyone to have three minutes to ask questions. For those of you that are listening, all right, we're going to have to add a minute, I'm sorry. So those of you that are on the call, you will need to ask questions of the professionals that are on the call. If you have comments, that would be reserved, those comments will be reserved for after Mrs. Zimmerman and the, the Steve Mylett make their closing arguments, and then you can make comments after that. I will tell you now that we will.
We just, well, we want the public to make their comments before the closing of the attorney's.
Oh, I'm sorry, right, then, then we'll come back for comments. After all the questions have been asked, we'll let you ask comments and then attorneys will close. So that you have the procedure down pat. We will stop this meeting a little bit after 10. We normally would not take any more testimony or anything after 10, we'll go to a little bit after 10 so that we give as many people as possible this time to be heard, but we'll probably have to carry the application to the next, to another, to a date to be determined at the end of this meeting. So I'll see everybody back in, at 9:27 now. I'll give you five minutes to go and do it if you need to take a quick stand-up, get something to drink or use the restroom, okay? Thank you. Mayor Perry, I see you, you'll be the first one on when we come back. I'll say, as a courtesy, I'll allow you to make a statement. Okay. Reasons. So. Alrighty, look at this very prompt board we have. We just need for all the professionals to come back on.
Serena?
Yes.
Okay, I was trying to call you. Brian, a township employee wants to know, do you want him to call the people in? Do you want him to stop them at three minutes, or are you going to say that, do you want him to announce them? How do you want to handle the?
Well, I'll, people are going to raise their hands, right? I could just look them at the hands and I'll, and I'll call their name and he can let the, whoever lets them in will let them.
So you'll say their name, then he'll let them in, and then what about the three-minute mark? Do you want?
I will set the timer for three minutes.
Okay, got it. Okay, thank you.
What do you want, why don't you set the ti- Do you have a timer available to you?
We can do it.
I have it on my, I'm sorry? I have it on my phone, I'll just, I'll just set it on my phone. I will give people a warning at 15 seconds, okay?
Oh, okay.
Alrighty, so, we're all back?
An extra step.
Looks like we're all back, okay. Mayor Perry is actually on the, the call, Tony Perry, for you, Brian. And I'm going to call on him first, and as a courtesy, I'm going to, you know, certainly, Mayor Perry, if you have come, if you have questions, but also if you'd like to make a comment, I'm going to allow you the courtesy of doing that. Have we let Mayor Perry in?
Thank you, Chair, Madam Chairman. Appreciate, appreciate that courtesy, members of, of the planning board, thank you very much, Tony Perry, Mayor.
Question, do you have video capability?
Yes, I do.
We just ask everyone to use video, that's the new rules we've adopted, when possible.
Okay, how about that? Now I do, now I do.
Thank you, Tom, thank you, Mayor Perry.
Thank you all very much, members of the committee, Chairwoman, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak today. Mr. Mayor, thank you as well. For the record, Tony Perry, I'm the mayor of Middletown Township. I don't know if you need my address for the record. One Kings Highway, Middletown, New Jersey, 07748. I appreciate all your time and I'll be, I'll be extremely brief out of respect for all of you. I, I have a, a seri-, some serious concerns about this project and I have heard from many members of the community here in Middletown, as well as some members of the community in Homedale as well, that, that are concerned with this project. I, I've been watching your meeting and, and I think many of the questions that have been asked are, are very relevant. Just a few I will touch on. The, the environmental impact, obviously, first and foremost, I have some serious concerns. One of which is, is that this is a, a wetlands area with, you know, good on, on the applicant for being able to get DEP approval, I'm not really sure how that happened. But.
One second. It sounds like you're gonna make comments more than questions. Why don't we swear you in just so the record's complete? And this can be testimony the board can have. So if you could just raise your right hand, do you swear to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth to help your?
Yes, I do.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Flager. Going back, just the environmental impacts that that will occur. The, the county performed flooding mitigation on Palmer Avenue. It's been an issue for us and for both Homedale and Middletown for as long as we can all remember. Palmer Avenue has flooded. It's a wet area. The county was able to perform flooding mitigation on this road, not based on future development. It was based on what was occurring. The county wasn't able to predict. So the, the comments that I heard from, from a variety of witnesses regarding the flooding that was, that was, that would happen and the mitigation that has occurred, that mitigation was done based off of the current usage of Palmer Avenue. So the, any type of additional development that will occur on Palmer Avenue, which will undoubtedly impact Middletown and the Middletown side of the road, is not accounted for, for the conditions. And, and jamming 16 units per acre into this area will no question have an impact on that flooding and on Palmer Avenue and the life of that road that we are all going to have to lobby the county to continue to maintain, to continue to, to reinvest in. And, you know, it's an issue for both Homedale and Middletown. The school bus issue, stopping on Palmer Avenue is, that is a horrible idea. You're talking about in, in the morning and in the afternoon, at minimum four buses just for your public schools, four buses. So Palmer Avenue will become the BQE in terms of stopping and starting because of bus stops. And that doesn't include any of your private schools, any, any of your special needs students that, that are being picked up for, for private school or for additional pickups. For, just based off of your, of your public schools. And not having done a traffic study. And I understand the reasoning for not having done a traffic study because COVID has had an impact, no question about it. But to be utilizing a traffic study that's not accounting for the current conditions, I think is, is not, not the best way to go in terms of selling the viability of this project. There's been a massive change by DOT to the intersection of that area on that jug handle. I think it's imperative that we ensure that whatever DOT standards are, they're measured accurately moving forward. The drainage basin, I do have one question. Mr. Flager, I'm assuming I'm allowed to ask a question? Thank you. The drainage basin, who's gonna be responsible for the maintenance of this drainage basin?
Mrs. Zimmerman?
Uh, we have to be responsible for it. I assume the township has an ordinance that requires the owner with the basin to maintain it.
Okay, and the, the, is there a bond that or some type of homeowners association that's gonna be created to ensure that that occurs?
Well, there's no homeowners association. This is gonna be a rental project and it'll be the owner's, owner's responsibility. But again, the township in all likelihood has an ordinance that addresses those issues. Mr. Flager, can you help us with that? Is there an ordinance?
Yeah, Jen, Jen would, Jen would know. I'm not aware of it.
Um, the drainage is more Bob's area. So what's the responsibility for the ma, for the basin is an engineering issue. But I will say that we're not interested in maintaining it. So, you know, should the board act favorably on the application, it's definitely something that we want to include within any kind of documentation that you, this is a rental project. So there will be a management and I think, I think Mr. Pizzo had testified previously that they were gonna own and maintain the project. They weren't flipping it, correct?
That's correct.
So I would say that Mr. Pizzo's management company would be responsible for maintenance.
So. Problem with the condition requiring us to maintain the basin.
Okay, and so thank, thank you, Jen. Thank you, Mr. Zimmerman. I mean, I would, I would ask that, obviously, any type of consideration for this project would have to include some type of assurance that the management company of this facility would continue to maintain it, given the fact that this is being built in wetlands, which in an area that already floods. The, the drainage basin is great and, and it's wonderful, an idea. But if it's not maintained, you might as well not build it. So, you know, I have some serious concerns there. And my final concern that I wanted to bring up tonight is, obviously, you know, both Middletown and Homedale have a mutual aid agreement with each other. The, the chairwoman knows it well. You know, oftentimes, Middletown Fire Department responds out of mutual aid to Homedale. And Homedale oftentimes, many times, responds for EMS to Middletown. The comments that I heard from one of the professionals mentioned concern for accessing parts of this building. Well, for, obviously, for Middletown, any type of application would have to go before our fire safety office and our fire marshal or fire department to evaluate and ensure that our fire department will be able to handle any type of situation in, in a certain project. Obviously, you know, not often does another town get a say when it comes to fire safety. But I think all of us could agree that if the Middletown Fire Department is responding to a, you know, a zoning that was done on the peripheral of the township of Homedale, Middletown Fire, since Old Village Fire Department is only right down the street, would most likely respond and back up Homedale Fire Department and could quite possibly could be the first one on the scenes in that area, given its proximity to the project. So I think that there's a lot of concerns, not only environmental, but from a traffic perspective on Palmer Avenue, from an emergency perspective, that has to be considered. And on behalf of the residents of Middletown, I would implore this board to reject this project. I think is not in, not proper for this area, given all the reasons that I've said. So I would respectfully and humbly request that you vote no on this application. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Does anybody have questions for the mayor?
I do. I have a question. Mr. Mayor, did you have the same concerns while evaluating the development across from Target? A massive townhouse or, I don't know if it's townhouse or rental, development right across from Target, which is just down the road from the other side of Palmer Avenue. That's number one, as far as the flooding is concerned. And number two, did, did you also get approval from the Homedale Fire Department for access to that same development? Did you have the same concerns that you were expressing for the Palmer Road, Barkley Square development?
Well, I can say no to that because I was seven years old when that project first came, came before a planning board. So given the fact that 23 years ago, that project was first, I can truthfully say that no, I did not have those concerns when that project was first brought up.
But they would, they would be the same concerns, would they not be?
A hundred, absolutely.
Thank you.
And, and as, as Mayor Bontempo knows, when he appeared prior to my tenure on the Township Committee here in Middletown, the mayor appeared before the, the Middletown Planning Board over concerns that he had over by the Sloan Kettering site. His thoughts and ideas were heard and in fact, what the mayor was advocating for, for the residents of Homedale was implemented.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Anyone else have a question for the mayor? Well, thank you, Ms. Mayor Perry. Your comments and your statements have been added to the record and certainly will be given great consideration.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you. Next, we'll have Elise Lebowitz.
Hi. Can I get permission? Hi, everyone. Elise Lebowitz, 143 Yarmouth Court, Homedale. And I'd like to ask permission to share my screen.
Um, I, I actually need to see you. I don't see you. The audio, the video's not on perhaps? There you go. Thank you. And.
Madam Chairlady, just a point of clarification. Are we just entertaining questions at this point or questions?
Yes. No, just questions. So Elise, first, for the record, please state your name and spell it. For the record and your, you already gave your address, but if you can just spell your last name, please, for the record.
Muted.
You're still muted, Elise. I'm sorry.
Okay, how's that?
Better.
Visual and audio. Okay. You got the spelling of my name and.
Could you spell it for the record, please?
L I E B O W I T Z.
Thank you, at Yarmouth Court. And this, questions only at this point in time, please.
Okay, well, would you agree with the township and the county's public assessments that we still have a severe flooding problem in this area, especially since they had to raise the roadway and requested the Rustler's study to be performed?
Mrs. Zimmerman, I think you're engineer. I don't see there. Okay, Mrs. Zugner? Mrs. Zugner, can you answer that question? You know what? I got, wait, before you answer, Elise, since it's gonna be just three minutes, why don't you ask all your questions and that way you can get all your answers at once and then we don't have to worry about stopping and starting the clock.
Okay, well, the first one I don't need to repeat, I don't think, right?
No, go ahead.
Okay, well, would you agree with the township and county public assessments that we still have a severe flooding problem in this area, especially since they had to raise the roadway and requested a Rutgers study, the Rutgers study to be performed? Okay, do you want me to continue or wait for that?
Please.
Okay, so Mr. Zugner had stated that they based the plans on 2009 modeling, but has, the water flow has changed since then. Are they aware of that, especially since the road was raised?
Okay, continue.
And we have seen, I'm sorry?
He's writing down the questions.
Okay, and we've seen and have photos of video as well, of flooding on this property before and after the road was raised. So when the floodwaters come downstream, downstream, the tributaries and, and lakes form on this property. So if you raise the property and prevent water intrusion, all of the floodwaters will bypass your property, Barkley Square, and collect around the rest of this area. Are you aware of that? Are those, those are the questions you have? They are my, yes, they are my.
Okay, thank you very much. All right. Mr. Mr. Zugner?
Sure. On, on the first, yes, we were definitely aware there's flooding on Palmer Avenue. That's flooding offsite on Palmer Avenue. As to the second, I think the date element is a little bit confusing. And I know Mr. Santana had, had talked about soil testing. And I'd looked in the interim that we'd done testing in 2009 and 2015 on soil conditions. And we use that criteria, both of it, in terms of determining seasonal high water table.
Have you seen the video that I shot, that I submitted to Bonnie? That shows the flooding in the portion of the road that was not raised, flooding that was, that occurred in 2017? The port and along the portion that the township did not raise. It's still the same condition on that road. Have you seen that video?
I've seen the video.
It's, I've submitted it to Bonnie several days ago. Has anyone on the board seen that video? Just shout it out. It's okay.
Mrs. Zugner, have you, thank you, Elise. And Mr. Zugner, did you say you did see the video?
I did see the video, yes.
Okay. Ms. Lebowitz, what's your question?
My question is, do you still feel that there's not a significant issue with the road flooding, given that that section was never raised? It's still the same today. That condition still exists.
I think we've talked and from the very beginning that we're very well aware that portions of Palmer Avenue flood and have a flooding issue.
So that's, it's okay that that happens again in this area. Is that acceptable for anyone that lives here? The road was closed.
So we believe we have safe access to our site and that our site is outside the flood area and NJDP has confirmed that.
Well, the video shows otherwise, but.
Thank you. Do you have any other questions, Elise?
No, thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it.
You're welcome. Thank you for your comments or your questions. Angela, I believe your hand was up next. Brian, you can take Elise off and put Angela on, please.
Mute. Hello, can you hear me?
I can. Brian, can you take, you're not on video yet. And, okay, I don't see you, Angela.
Raise, we hang on virtuals, minimum, trying to figure out how to put it on. Give me a second.
Sure.
Oh, start video, duh, right there. Can you hear me?
Can you state your name and spell it for the record?
My name is Angela Asaro, A S A R O. I live in Palmer Square, resident, 85 Richmond Courts out.
Thank you. Go ahead, ask your question.
Um, so you addressed a lot of stuff with water, so I guess I won't touch that one. Just I will express, it is a huge concern. As a resident here, I do see water filling up even within the property, within the community. I have witnessed the road closed.
Angela, I don't mean to interrupt you. I'm sorry, but comments are for another time. If you could just ask your questions, I'm, you know, sorry, just ask your series of questions. They'll write them down and answer you.
No problem. I guess my question would be around trafficking. I had heard the whole time comments around trafficking and want to understand what will be done to identify the traffic patterns now, right? Someone, I think it was Mr. Andrew, made a comment about traffic is lower during this past year. I would say that's not an accurate statement. This area is still flooded with cars. And my concern obviously is when you have the target across the street and the new development that's on the other side of 35, what is that? Now we have another development right next to our residential home. So are we going to, the question is, are we going to be really taking focus and stock into what those traffic patterns look like? Because that's a big concern. That's, that's one question. The second question is the concern around the buses, right? So we all have kids in the area and I know at, at minimum, there are four buses that come in, in through here. And I know the pain as a resident, what it looks like getting in and out when I have to bring my child somewhere later in the day and this bus is coming back and forth, private and public. So again, the second question is, are we looking at that in more detail? I hear a lot of talk around it, but I'm not really hearing what we're gonna do to identify how that's gonna impact the traffic in this area.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Ferrando?
Yes, the, the first part of the questions had to do with the traffic analysis. Our traffic analysis did account for the current traffic conditions. And that was based on the growth rate, rate that the DOT prescribes us to use. So our analysis does account for current and future, the future when the site is built and the traffic from the site is put on the road. The analysis follows all traffic modeling standards and does account for traffic on the road under the conditions that you had described. Also, with the buses, I, I've mentioned that it's really out of our hands. It's up to the Board of Education and the police. However, should the Board of Education choose to do so, they could use the smaller buses, the vans, which would have no issue if they chose to pull off the road and go into the site. Typically, the schools don't want to bring the larger buses into site because they would have to navigate. And that would go for any development. That will go for any townhouse development, condo development, apartment complex. They don't want to go into those sites with the larger buses. However, the smaller vans, should there be less children per this stop, and again, it's up to the Board of Education, they could enter the site and certainly circulate the site.
I, I will tell you, large buses are coming in here. So I'm not sure what you're saying about smaller buses. They are.
I understand that's an existing condition and certainly putting, that will continue to occur. If buses are on that road, that will continue to occur based on the Board of Education's choice of the circulation for those buses. They, they choose the patterns for pickup and drop off for those buses.
Okay, thank you.
I'm not sure you answered the question, but okay. I, I am concerned about the traffic that's continuing to increase, but.
Thank you, Angela. And you'll have time to make a comment, probably at the next hearing. So thank you very much for your, for your questions. Mr. Zugner? Brian Foster, one of our board members, has a question specifically for. Brian Foster, one of our board members, has a question specifically for you. And then we'll go to Sanjay Patel.
You mentioned that they had the two studies in 2009 and 2015. Were there any differences that came back with any of those studies?
Not substantially, and those weren't studies, those were soil samples and tests. So dug into the ground, how deep is seasonal high water? What are the soil conditions? What's the permeability or the ability for the water to soak into those soils? And those tests were done in different areas, so each test is slightly different because it's in a different location. They were done at different times, so we have a good picture of the whole site at this point. And I think we're pretty confident in terms of what seasonal high water table is.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Patel, have you? We put him on, Sanjay Patel?
So, can you see me?
Yes, I can, thank you.
Thank you, sure, I'm Sanjay Patel, I live at 52 Duxbury Court, I just have one question for the applicant. I'm resident in this area for last 15 years, next to the proposed development. There have been frequent flooding plus, and there are two major storms, Irene and Sandy, that literally flooded the area, particularly the entrance of the property. And it was almost like people were driving the canoe there. And I also understand that that particular area has been raised, the part of the road has been raised. But there's also a new development of 4 acres coming at the top. My question is, it is, it is very short time since the road has been raised, and there's still a possibility that during those kind of major storms like Irene or Sandy, those property entrances get flooded. Question is, if the property entrance gets flooded, is there an alternate way for emergency vehicles to enter the new development?
Mrs. Zugner? Is there an alternate way for people to get in and out if that flooded? It doesn't seem like it on the plan, but.
There's, there's one vehicle entrance in and out.
So to answer your question, Mr. Patel, no.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. I think Jill Hirschman was next, and then Michael Pataglia will be after that. Oh, I'm sorry, I by accident hit lower all hands, so if you could, if, put your hand back up, thank you. Okay. Jill Hirschman, thank you, Jill, please state your name and address for the record.
Jill Hirschman, 348 Middlewood Road in Middletown, I live in the Cherry Tree Village complex. I have a question about the parking. I know the plan has stated, and it's been stated a few times, that there are 116 spots for 60 units, so less than two spots per unit. What is the plan for when there are people, I mean, people visiting? There's no parking on Palmer Ave. There's no overflow parking or any other kind of municipal lots or anything in the area. There's only the other complexes and Target. What's the plan for, you know, when the holidays happen and then people come over and visit and there's overflow? And I also have a question about the traffic patterns. I know that, that you talked a couple of times about taking the, the growth rate into account. But the growth rate wouldn't take into account the fact that a new housing complex went in across the street on 35. So what was done to account for the traffic that's caused by that?
Okay, thank you. Mr. Ferrando?
Best addressed to Mr. Ferrando?
Sure, first I'll start with the parking. We meet the RSIS requirements, which is the standard in the state. The question was, what happens during the holidays or what happens when visitors come over? That's all taken into account in the RSIS. Typically, we find for apartments during holidays, people in apartments leave the site and go to other places, just as much as anybody would come over to the apartment. So there's a balance there, and that's taken into account in the standards that we have to follow for parking. As for the traffic study, we followed the standards, we did the analysis that is required of us for this road. We used the growth rate, we used the roadway volumes, and we analyzed the driveway under existing conditions. No build conditions, which means future to when the site would be developed, but without the site traffic and then with the site traffic. That's the standard way of analyzing traffic, and we understand there's traffic in the area. I'm not saying there's not traffic in the area, but we accounted for it in our traffic study. And that traffic study was done according to traffic modeling standards.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome. Mr. Pataglia?
Okay, I am here, can you hear and see me?
We can, thank you.
Okay, hi, my name, thank you, Madam Chair, my name is Michael Pataglia, spelled B as in boy, A T T A G L I A. I live in 281 Clubhouse Drive, Middletown, New Jersey, in Cherry Tree. I have a few questions for Mr. Jerk, I apologize if I didn't pronounce your name correctly.
Correct, we're all having trouble naming pronunciations today.
Yeah, we are. Okay, so, so have you read the entire 38-page Rutgers study? And after, if you have read that, what additional burden would be imposed by the construction directly across the road on Route 35 in Middletown? What would, what would that pose and how would it affect the flooding in the area of Palmer Square? I'm going to keep rattling off my questions. And what, what justification would Barclays have for going forward with the project without actually having an accurate and up-to-date information about these aspects of flooding, which could be caused by the project that was built across the street? And Mr. Jerk, in all your work in preparation for this project, have you actually physically been on the property during a heavy rainfall to see what actually happens? And my last question is, are you aware that everyone in Cherry Tree also has a basement? And there are several units of Cherry Tree Village across the street from the proposed project in the area that are along Palmer Avenue? And I'm just wondering if you were aware that we do have basements as well? And to let you know, it houses our furnace and our hot water heaters, which could be damaged and have been damaged by my neighbors, I know, in flooding. And I yield my time, Madam Chair, thank you.
Thank you so much.
So, a couple of questions. First, would answer a little bit about new development, including ours and other development in the area. The rules are pretty strict on how we treat stormwater. And just like here, we do not release more stormwater after development. That's what stormwater basin and underground stormwater management and rain gardens are about. So that there might be another new development in the area, that, that development should not be increasing flooding. Just like ours should not. So we would not need to take that into account or review that or add flow into the street or anywhere else based on that.
Do you know that for fact, that it wouldn't increase flooding? A neighboring project? Just out of curiosity, I mean, are you certain 100% certain that it wouldn't increase flooding?
If all rules, ordinances, and regulations are followed, it would not increase flooding. The Rutgers study, no, I have not read the entirety of the Rutgers study. Then the third question you had was on your basements. I, of course, have stated that I'm not particularly concerned at 65 to 100 feet away about a basement because we don't infiltrate or recharge all that much water. Again, it's the water quality or the smallest of storms that's being infiltrated. So several hundred feet away, I would certainly not be concerned.
Okay, and my last question was, have you actually been on property during a heavy rainfall to witness to see what the road looks like?
No, unfortunately, I have not been able to be there during a heavy rainfall then. I have pictures and videos, and I've done my best to see recreations of it, but I have not been there in person.
Thank you for your time, sir, appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Pataglia. Steve?
You asking for me, Madam Chairwoman?
It only says Steve, and after Steve, we'll do the Keegans and her. Oh, and Brian Foster has another question. Okay, I'm just going to take two more questions and then we're going to wrap up for tonight after this. And then we'll have to carry the application to another date. Steve, can you state your name for the record?
Yes, hi, my name is Stephen Waltonburg. I'm at 514 Clubhouse Drive in Middletown. My building is, the back of my building is on Palmer Avenue. And I know the Mayor Perry and most recently Michael Pataglia addressed the flooding issue. I have a quick concern, I recently purchased in this area with the understanding that the grading of the road had been corrected. And I'm very concerned about the flooding, just like everybody else is. And I'm very concerned that I'm hearing, very, I'm wondering, the real question is this. How can you be certain that this, your project will not affect the flooding? I understand what you're saying about Mrs. Zugner, about the following rules and regulations, but you don't know. You don't know unless you stand there and you and this is a real concern, when you're not sure. Thank you.
Okay. Mrs. Zugner, is there a way you can answer that question?
What I would say is that the designs and elements for stormwater management are not brand new. This is something that's been done for quite some time at this point and has been studied and practiced based on designs and different soil conditions, different locations and in different places. So nothing in life is virtually certain, this is as close to certain as I can be.
So what happens when, after all of your following the rules and regulations, and you say, it's not going to impact, it's not going to impact? We have the detention basin, it's not going to impact, and then the flood happening, and then our basements, just like Mr. Pataglia had mentioned, get flooded, are you going to rectify, are you going to pay for that? Are you going to pay for our home insurance? Are you going to pay for the, the water damage to our basements and the hot water heaters and the furnaces? Are you going to pay for that? Is, is the Barclays project going to pay for that? We all are living in these difficult times, and these kind of concerns, we, we, we don't need this. We don't need these additional concerns, and what if, and what if, and what if? My parents said if is the largest word in English language. Okay, you can't say, we can't, we, you can't say, we follow the regulations.
Steve, I'm sorry, I know you're upset and I, I hear it, and I'm, and I'm sorry, I'm sorry this is upsetting you so, but we're sticking to questions at this point, and you can certainly make a comment when we open for comments at our next meeting.
Understood, I apologize because I've been.
No, that's okay, there's no apology.
I was a part, I was a part of rage, I used to live in Hazle, and I know what the rage
Yes.
did, so it's, it's, you know, to come into community and see this happening, it just.
It's, yes, I hear the frustration. Right.
I apologize for my, my rambling.
No, 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 that's totally fine, and we understand that, you know, and you're not the only one, people do it all the time. So we understand that you're frustrated and it's, it's upsetting, and that's fine. As far as payment, I don't think there's any way they, you know, and that either Barclays, well, Mr. Zugner certainly, not personally, but Barclays Square would have any kind of ability to first, you know, to, to pay you if there is a flood. And so your, your question is noted, so, but thank you, sir, for it. And please come back to our next meeting and you can make, you know, three minutes worth of comments and, and talk about your mom and dad's biggest word is if, and they're not right. The other two words you don't use is always and never, so, so, but thank you, sir, for your comments, they are so.
Horse shoes and hand grenades.
Yes, we'll see you at the next.
Thank you very much, Chairman.
You're welcome, Steve, thank you. Okay, I see Mr. Locato signed on, so we're going to take these, these next three questions, and then we're going to wrap up and have them, this carried to the next meeting. The Keegans, please. You're on mute.
Hey, how's it going? My name is Keegan, I live at 147 Yarmouth Court in Hommeville here.
Okay.
K E E G A N.
Thank you.
The first name, Mr. Keegan?
Enda, E N D A. I'm from Ireland, one of those weird Irish names.
Yeah, I love.
I have two questions actually regarding, one is the school bus situation. I know the gentleman had mentioned that the school buses are part of the school system, it's not a part of this. But I do have questions about, I know there's been fatal accidents on Palmer Square, I looked up the research, and will there be special walkways for children, obviously if they're going to be coming on, on that side that we dropped off, but in the morning and the evening time, do they have to cross the road at any point? And will there be a crossing guard there, and also will there be a walkway with a light or something so the kids can walk there safely? That's my first question regarding the school bus system. The second is, and I've mentioned this a few times, I was, the mayor of Middletown also mentioned, is if you can't get a school bus in there to turn around, and if you can't get emergency vehicles in there easily, what is responsibility of Barclays for the, let's just say Palmer Square residents, if a fire happens to go from one to the other? And based on the fact that it wasn't designed where the fire can be put out properly in a hurry, it now affects not just Barclays, but also affects the Palmer Square residents? And how is that going to be addressed? Do they have insurance for that? And will, will insurance be required for that company for that reason? So that's it, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Keegan. Mr. Ferrando, you want to go first, and then Mr. Zugner can go?
Sure, again, about the buses, school buses are equipped with the flashing red lights. Upon activation, all traffic stops, red lights on the buses require traffic to stop for the students. And the bus drivers know the procedures, they cross the students. If a special crossing guard is necessary, again, that's something that's up to the Board of Education. They handle that on a required as needed basis. As for emergency access to the site, we did have the fire department review fire equipment. Emergency equipment can get into the site. We've testified to that in the previous hearing. Certainly, as needed, a bus could get in the site and circulate the site. Again, that's up to the Board of Education. They usually don't want to waste time circulating a site, and that's part of their determination of the circulation patterns. But we have determined that emergency equipment and all delivery vehicles, trash trucks, they can get onto the site and exit the site per engineering design standards for circulation patterns.
And just regarding the insurance for Barclays, if they've got something, if something does happen?
On the public road?
No, I'm talking just for the Mr. from Barclays, sir, thank you for your answer, I appreciate it. Regarding insurance.
That's a, that's a private party question. Mr. Zimmerman can answer, I assume his client will have insurance, what it covers is nothing to do with this board.
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay, but I think it's responsible, as tenants in Palmer Square, we'd want to know if something does happen, how are we covered if it happens to go from one to the other? I mean, I think it's part of the whole thing as it's been built, how that affects it.
Respectfully, Madam Chairman, that's, that's not within the planning board's jurisdiction.
Madam Chairwoman, I need to get some clarification from Mr. Ferrando on what he just said.
Sure.
Mr. Ferrando, regarding emergency vehicles going into the complex, I asked specifically about ladder trucks. And I was, if I understand correctly, the answer was, no, the ladder trucks couldn't go in, but they could stand outside. Is that correct?
The ladder trucks could enter the site. They would not be able to circulate under the building, certainly that's not a way a fire truck or emergency vehicle would fight a fire. They, they would not go near the building. And my understanding is typically emergency vehicles like to stay away from the building when fighting the fire. So could they enter the site and fight it from there? They could, and it would require backing to leave the site, but there would be traffic directors to get them out of the site. I think the earlier testimony in the previous hearing might have been that they might even fight the fire from offsite just to stay away from the building as they fight the fire. But that would be up to the fire department, and again, the fire department has reviewed the plans. And we've addressed their comments. But that would be up to the fire department. And again, the fire department has reviewed the plans, uh, and we've addressed their comments. So that would be my answer.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Ferenda.
Okay, um, my apologies. Uh, Mr. McGann? Well, unless, I'm the only one. And then after that, Jim Locato, when we're gonna close the public question portion of the, of this hearing. Mr. McGann?
Hi. Hi, my name is Harish Magen. I live at 45 Ducksbury Court. I've been living here for the past 22 years. And I've been having, uh, problems in the basement. There's water leaks in my basement, right? And of late, uh, my sump pump started working. It never worked for the past 20 years I've been living here, right? It's only for the past six months it started pumping water out, okay? That's very unusual that this happened. So I don't know if it's the water table or whatever it is, but it started working recently. Now, the builder claims, uh, their project won't make the flooding worse, but what God forbids, it does, right?
Mr. McGum, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but do you have a question? We have comments. We'll do it next time. Thank you.
Okay. If the flood occurs, is the builder or the township willing to raise a bond to cover the flood expenses? That's my question.
Okay, thank you. I can tell you the township was more than likely not willing to put a bond up because that's not, uh, how, how it gets done. But, um, Mrs. Zimmerman?
Uh, again, that's something that's outside the, the planning board's jurisdiction. There's nothing in the municipal land use law that requires developers to post a bond in a situation like this for private parties.
Okay.
Okay.
Sorry, Mr. You're welcome to come to the next meeting and make your comments about your basement and your sump pumps.
Sure. Thanks.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And Mr. Locato, you'll be the last question and we'll close the question, um, portion.
Okay, can you see me?
Nope.
No, hmm. Uh, start video. Let's see.
There you go. Okay, now we see you.
All right. Um, I do have a, a couple of questions and I'll start off. My name is Jim Locato, L-I-C-A-T-O. And I live at 57 Ducksbury Court. And I've been living in the area for about 26 years now. Um, I do have some questions, but I, I do need to, to give a little, uh, context first. Last August, um, I met with Mayor Brontempo, the Township Administrator and the Township Engineer Ben Matlack, uh, from CMA Associates. I guess he was the engineer at the time. And, uh, they came to Palmer Square, uh, so that we can give them a tour around the community and show some of our flooding concerns. Uh, one of the things that the Township Engineer spotted right away was that he noticed, uh, large streams and tributaries set back about, I'd say about eight to 10 feet behind, uh, a number of our homes. And he was a little surprised. He took a look at, uh, the flood map and he saw that on the flood map, Horace Creek was supposed to be set back about 50 to 75 feet. Um, so these tributaries, which were filled with water and it hadn't rained in a while, and, and, uh, had gone back all the way towards the, uh, the southern side of our property, which is towards the Barclay, Barclay property, it was filled with water. So one of the concerns we have is that, what's changed since then? Well, there's been some new developments uh, in the area and there's been the raising of the road. So now to get to my question is, if we're seeing changes in this flood plain, this flood area, I'd like to know, when was the last time the flood map was updated? Did DEP send anyone on site to look at the wetlands when reviewing this application? Um, has anyone from the township contacted DEP to question the flood map? And these unaccounted-for tributaries that we're now seeing that are very, very close to our homes? And then, uh, the last question I have is, while the testimony for this, for this project is that it will neither increase nor decrease the flooding, isn't it true that the floodwaters coming from upstream will now effectively bypass this property? Instead of fanning out onto it, it will now bypass this property and come down towards our properties? Which, to me, kind of explains why we're seeing these new tributaries is because of all the changes that have occurred in the recent years, including the raising of the roadway. Those are my questions.
Thank you. Mrs. Zugner?
Uh, sure. Uh, first, in terms of the flood map, uh, for our property, we actually have a defined flood hazard limit. And DEP reviewed that. That did include them being on-site to review that and looking at current surveys, as well as flood analysis. Same for wetlands. They were on-site. They've walked our site and they've made determinations. And all that was through 2019 and
I was gonna say, that's on my phone.
No, it's your timer. I didn't turn it off. Sorry.
So, right, so as to sort of the, those flood limits and wetlands and the impacts, DEP was literally on the site in 2019 and 20 uh, and saw the current conditions and issued permits based on what we've proposed. I would, you know, note to some extent, uh, not mentioned by Mr. Locato is that, um, debris has continued to accumulate in this channel. Uh, that is another element that could possibly have changed and have some impact. And so the proposal for us to be de-snagging this channel, uh, and I believe it was said, uh, once or twice a, a year based on the ordinance, that could have a very big impact in a beneficial way.
I, I'd like to respond to that because, Miss, Miss DeMaso, you and I have some history when it comes to the, the snagging and desilting of this creek, going back to when you were mayor. And that was probably back in 2005-ish timeframe. And, uh, here we are, 2000, you know, 21, and the flooding in the area has gotten worse. So I'm not, I, I, I don't believe that de-silting and de-snagging, uh, is the end-all be-all to solve our problems because it's been done before and it has not affected anything and our flooding has gotten worse over the years, not better.
Thank you, Jim.
So it, the last question about the bypassing of the property, is that a true statement where effectively you're gonna be raising up your property, essentially damming off any waters from fanning out onto your property, in which case, all the upstream waters, the floodwaters, where will they go?
So this goes back again to the DEP permit. If we were filling within the flood hazard area, you would be accurate. That would be true. But we are not. We're not filling within the flood hazard area. So what you described should not be true.
And I have pictures of all the lakes, tributaries that form on the exact property, the exact location where you're gonna be putting that, that building. I have, I have documented proof to show you all the floodwaters that show up on that property.
Okay, um, Mr. Locato, I, I ask that you, um...
Yep, I, I will stop at that point.
No, I'm, I'm, no, I would ask that you, um, at our next hearing,
Yep, we'll bring it up in the comments.
Right. And you, if you can send that, those, uh, whatever documents you have, Marty, correct me if I'm wrong, you can send those to the board so we have them?
I, I did, I did provide some pictures, uh, Bonnie, to Bonnie last week, uh, so you should have some photos.
And so any, any exhibit, I would say to any, uh, any, uh, witness, uh, if they have anything they want to, uh, one of the earlier witnesses mentioned something also.
A video also, yes, which I have.
If it hasn't been, please get it to Bonnie so it can be get posted on the, uh, website at least.
Well, can I ask, has anybody even looked at, at, at the, the pictures that I sent? I mean, if it's up on the website, they're exhibits. I appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Um, okay, thank you, Mr. Locato. Brian, you had another question or that was by accident? Okay. Brian, uh, the other Brian, Hommeville Township Brian, you can take Mr. Locato off the panel. And at this time, if there's, um, I'm going to close the question portion for, um, this hearing. And, um, when we come back, the next time we come back, we will have comments only. And, um, unless, and so if any members of the govern, of this planning board have any questions, you're welcome to ask them again now.
Serena, just for the record, just, uh, I'd make a statement that there, there are no other hands, so that's why we're closing.
Well, there are also no other hands for questions, right? So I took all the questions that, the hands that were raised. So we will, there are no other questions. I'm not shutting off any, any public questions at this point. And the next one, we open again. At the next time, there will be comments made. Um, people will be sworn in. If people have, uh, exhibits, they can send them to Bonnie and she will send them out to us. So Bonnie, can we have a date? Can we, what are the dates of the next planning board meetings? And then Mrs. Zimmerman and Mr., um, I'm not gonna be able to do it. Manelli? Yeah. Well, um, maybe we can get a time, a date that's amenable to both?
Well, we have March 16th, April 6th, April 20.
I'm looking.
March 16th, April 6th, April 20.
They're all fine with me, uh, Madam Chairwoman.
Okay.
They are all fine with me and I'm, and I'm happy to accommodate for the March 16th, so there's no further delay. I just wouldn't be able to start until 7:30. I have a 6 o'clock meeting. So if we're not the first on the agenda, that should be fine.
I think they're the only, uh, Bonnie, is there anything else on the agenda?
No, it would be first. Wanna go with April 6th?
Okay, let's do April 6th. Is that okay with you, Mrs. Zimmerman?
Yes, let me just check with my professionals. I, I
Oh, that would be good. Are the professionals available April 6th? Mr. Murphy as well?
Works for me.
Yep, seems, uh, seems fine. Yep.
Okay, I could just mention, I, I know we're going to carry this without further notice, but also when we're saying that, we should say that new, uh, Zoom information will be provided, you know, prior to that date. It'll be listed on the website, on the agenda.
So any member of the public needs to see the agenda on the website to gain access.
Right.
Correct.
A new code.
Okay, so there'll be a new code. This me, this hearing will be carried to April 6th at 7:00 PM with no further notice. Again, if anybody has, um, exhibits they would like us to see, they are to send them to, uh, Ms. Impas, Impasamato at the, at the Township. And she will put them on the website. And our next hearing will be for comments only. And, um, then the, both, in, in both the, um, the applicant and the objective will wrap up, I would assume by then. Okay? Do I need a motion for that, Marty?
No, no.
Right now. Okay, thank you. Thank you all. So the final, um, business we have and then we can get out of here on time? Well, by 10:30 as our, as our, um, our, our paperwork says, uh, we have the minutes from the January 12th meeting. Has anybody made any corrections to them?
I didn't hear from anyone.
Wow, very good job. Well, you heard from me. I wasn't sure about the
Right.
So if there being no comments, can I have a motion to adopt the minutes from January 12th?
I, I move.
Who is that, Bill?
Yes.
Joyce will be a second?
Okay, all in favor?
All in favor? Okay, do we have anything from the attorney?
No.
Planner? No, ma'am. Okay, engineer?
Uh, no, I do not.
Great, thank you so much. Okay, at this point in time. So Bonnie, do we, do we, we have nothing on March 16th?
Correct. So we'll
So, uh, due to lack of quorum and can we please make that, due to lack of agenda, can we please put that in the notice that we were, the meeting on March 16th has been canceled?
Be canceled. Okay. Yep.
Okay, um, can I have a motion to cancel the meeting on March 16th?
Motion.
Bill, that was, that was you, Bill? Number seven?
Second.
Okay, thank you. All in favor?
I'm sorry.
Posh.
Oh, Posh, okay.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi, okay. Thank you all. I need a motion to adjourn?
Move.
Action. All right. All righty, thank you all. Have a great night. We'll see you in a month. Take care. Bye-bye.